It is eight thirty and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time for an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. And we don't have any citizens present, so we'll move on to our next item. Approval of the agenda. Do we have any corrections or additions to the agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On our consent agenda today, we have approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, and approval of the human services report. Do we have any additions or deletions to the consent agenda? Anybody want anything removed or would we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to routine business, approval of claims.
Who approval?
Any discussion on claims? We'll have a roll call vote on claims.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries. Department head report. Sheriff, could we start with you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a quick report of the jail. We were been down in numbers and when we did this report on the fifth, we were at sixteen and this morning we were at seventeen, so that's a trend right now, which is okay because that's given staff to paint. We got an inmate that's a pretty good painter, so we got him painting the cell blocks and cleaning up. And before, when we were having more inmates and so forth, and the type of inmates, I was running three correction officers most of the time. Now we're back down to two until we move back. You know, I'm sure it's eventually, we'll probably get a few more inmates, but that's kind of, we're cutting back down to the two that it's handling that. Otherwise, the jail still stays busy with twenty-four seven. There's a hundred and forty-nine on twenty-four seven and there's ninety that come in every day to blow, seventeen on scram, nine from other counties come in. We got fifteen on drug patches. We got forty-eight on UAs. And then we have seven on GPSs. So we still stay busy also on mental health related. That slowed down a little bit. We did, I know that we've had a couple transports and stuff, so, but things are going well there. The guys are busy out running traffic and so forth. When it gets to be nice weather, there's always speed and those types of things. And over Memorial Day, we worked Ponset area and worked some speed and didn't notice that. I asked the guys to look for parking problems, didn't seem to, parking didn't seem to be an issue up there. So we're keeping an eye on parking and stuff, but speed was an issue. That road's easy to speed on, so we're working that. Then the other thing just is for liability insurance, I would like to put two volunteer, there are two internships. One is a SDSU student who'll be with me for two-hundred-and-forty hours, basically, for his internship. Then also, I have a high school student that's from Rutland. She lives in Brookings County that's would like to do an internship and that will last about six months. It's four hours a week, so she's going to come in two nights at two hours. I'm going to have her doing certain things, but the way our insurance wants us to list those now, so I think it's thirty-seven dollars for both of those. I mean, per person, so. But I always, before, when we had, when we had Mr. Wilson, I think it was Wilson that was here, I always thought our interns were covered from like SDSU and then I checked with SDSU and they go, no, it's county. So before, they kind of, insurance has kind of changed. Now you've got to list them with open meetings and stuff, so that's why I'm doing this. And I always have Brookings High School interns during the school year too, and I'll come in the fall with that, so. Other than that, unless you have some questions?
Thank you.
A quick question for you, real quick. We had a discussion at our joint powers meeting. We were talking, giving an update on the jail expansion and they had noticed that Moody County is now transporting some of their people into Pipestone, Minnesota and that kind of stuff. Are you still seeing a need of the surrounding counties trying to find beds and stuff like that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm still not opening anything up because I never know when I'm going to, so, yeah, definitely.
Okay. I just didn't know if, you know, looking at the numbers here, if that was something you were maybe considering to try to put some agreements that maybe we get that relationship started now and then, you know, if we get that expansion going and stuff too, that they could just follow through with that.
And it's not even an issue because they, I keep getting calls from the surrounding sheriffs asking when, when, if there's a chance. And I could probably take some business on now, but the trouble is if I start that, then I probably will need space and so I'm just kind of holding back and still not taking on anybody right now. But if we, you know, I could take a few if I, if, I know Lake County would like to bring some females back over here and stuff, so. But right now, down in the numbers, we're using that just to kind of clean up and that. And then maybe once we get these cells cleaned up and so forth, you know, I could probably sell some beds. I shouldn't say sell some beds, rent some beds. But no, they're still interested. Moody County will come here and hurt me, Kingsbury County and so forth, so. Yeah, we have some new sheriffs in the area too. Dua County's got a new sheriff, Kingsbury County's got a new sheriff, Lincoln County's got a new sheriff, so there's lots of new sheriffs around, but most of the ones that got elected don't have jails, so, yeah.
But you already have contracts with some of them.
I have contracts with them, it's just I'm not honoring them.
The relationship is there.
Yeah, the relationship's still there. I still have signed contracts, but I have a clause in there that says, you know, only if I have space, so.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Dick, would you like to go next?
Good morning.
Good morning.
May fifteenth, I met with Kurt Nelson to sign the easements for the bridge project on Highway seventy-seven south. Those are our big grant projects. They're also the state, these are pretty much the final items. And the reason we had to do them now is they're going to turn this into one project instead of handling it independently and the prior one only listed for two-thirty-nine, so that's just a technicality on easements.
When you say "they," who's the "they" that's turning it into one project?
The state DOT.
The DOT.
Right. And then I talked with Josh Spildy again about his Windsor Township box project, box culvert project, and they would more or less just like to request that the county would pay for the culverts and the township will take care of everything else. And so roughly, they're looking at three forty-foot culverts, fifty-four inches in diameter, which would be eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. The other site is two sixty-inch culverts by forty feet long, and that's eight thousand four hundred and five dollars. So their request in total is seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars. And I guess I'm supposed to get back to them after today's meeting, so is there any feelings? Is that going to work for the board or?
Would you give me those figures again, please?
What was that?
Eighty-nine fifty-five for the first one, but I didn't realize there was another set of culverts. I guess, did I?
Right, there's two sites that they're doing the same exact thing. They're taking out an old concrete box culvert. The one requires three fifty-four inch culverts and each of them are forty feet long. And the other site, on the north-south side, that's two sixty-inch in diameter culverts and those are forty feet long. And so a total cost of all five of those culverts, and they will have them delivered or pick them up themselves, so we would just be responsible for the seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars, which is, they're large projects, it's not.
Total cost of the project though?
It was, if I remember right, Stacy might even have a copy of that from way back, the one Josh turned in. I think it was almost forty-one thousand dollars or something like that, thirty-one or thirty-seven thousand, somewhere in there.
Because it seems like we only saw one.
We saw one before.
Yeah, that's why I'm confused.
One what?
We saw one bid for one bridge.
One culvert.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's one bid, but there were two sites on that one bid. The same contractors doing them both.
Right, but we only had the first one, it was only eight thousand dollars for the one set of culverts.
And we agreed to do that, but they needed, but we also wanted them to have engineering done, right?
Yeah.
And the total project cost was like fourteen or fifteen, fourteen thousand, so we were about half is what we were doing by doing that, and I think that's what we approved, but I didn't know about the second bridge.
No.
Yeah.
That's where the confusion is. I didn't.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll clarify that, but I'm sure it's two sites because when I went out and first investigated the sites to see where they were at and what their problem was, they're the same exact age, they're both built in nineteen thirty-nine, they're both box culverts. One is on the east-west street and I can't remember whether it's, what number it is, and the other one is down a half mile and a half mile north. And so, yeah, that's, so I'll clarify that and bring that back. I apologize. I thought that original one had.
Mm-mm, it was just one.
Okay.
And Josh, and I mean, when Mr. Spildy was in here, he just talked about one site also.
Okay, all right. Well, then, we'll get that cleared up and we'll deal with that the next meeting.
Yep, there it is.
Ten thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yep, that'd be the one.
So there was two.
Then we also, did you want more on that or?
Just a second. Don't go so fast.
Is that, with that?
Yeah.
That's the two sixty-inch culverts.
Yeah, see, and that's the Lake Mitchell site, that's the north-south one, and I could have sworn there was another one that showed the east-west, but it don't matter, they have it.
There's this one too, there's a second one that shows three fifty-four.
Yeah. And that's another twelve thousand.
But the total, but the total cost is about twenty-two and we're paying seventeen of it.
Right.
And that's just the culverts?
That's just the culverts. There's no ends, there's no, nothing else, no material.
It seems like we were.
We're leaning towards fifty percent of the project.
Yeah, that's what originally seemed like the cost to do one of them was fifteen to sixteen thousand and we were paying, you know, almost eight. We were kind of going a fifty-fifty split is what I had thought.
Okay.
And it seems like now it's, the installation has reduced quite a bit, but yet obviously the culvert stayed the same, so.
Right. And the cost for the culvert just came from our bid from True North Steel. That's what we would pay for those culverts. That's how I came up with that price.
We might need to look back in the minutes because I thought we agreed to pay for the culverts.
Yeah, we did, but when the bid was, you know, in my opinion, I guess, my thought was the bid was, we were one fifty-fifty with them is what my thought was, and culvert was fifty-fifty, so do that, but.
So probably the best way to mention it to Josh would be that the county would pay fifty percent of the original estimate turned in for both projects, so it'd be eleven thousand some dollars?
It seemed like we had a different bid than this. We had one, when was this one done?
Well, one was.
This was when Josh came in, in April.
The other one was for Oak Lake Township and that was eleven thousand. That was what Norris wanted for his project.
Right, but we.
The only other, I'm trying to think if there was.
Are you able to pull up the minutes to?
Yeah. I don't know that this was ever an agenda item per se where you took action. There was maybe a consensus.
We had a consensus.
Yes, we did have a consensus. And I thought it was for the culverts. I hate to renege on that now, however.
I thought at that time, the culverts were about half the price of what the total project was.
I agree.
So Dick, when you talked to them, they are going to do engineering?
He, he did not say, I told him that you expect engineering and everything be done properly in the proper width. Now, when he called me back and asked if we would just pay for the culverts, his response was, if you'll be willing to pay for the culverts, we'll take care of everything else. Those were his exact words, so I can call back, I'll have to, I'll have to verify that, but it was my understanding originally that he understood that that had to be done.
And the forty-one thousand, which I know you said was an estimate, where'd that number come from?
That was, I could have sworn when he first put it together, that that included his contract for removing the old structure. That was including purchasing the culverts themselves and then doing all the restoration and engineering and everything else, bringing in material there again. I don't know, when they get done, they're going to have to backfill and seat the pipes correctly and stuff like that. I mean, I guess I'm taking too much for granted not having them listed individually, but it's, it's a sizable amount that they'll be.
So in the minutes on the fifteenth, what happened was only one of the two bids was presented on May fifteenth.
Okay.
And so it was this, the one for the three forty-inch culverts, because then if I go back through the packet and what was turned in was just the one project estimate with notes from Josh that said they'd pay for everything except the culvert. And so then on the fifteenth, the board agreed to pay the seventy-four forty-six. I think we were waiting to come back with maybe some just more clear-cut information from Josh and do that in an actual motion at a meeting, but.
Okay.
I think what we.
But I think the second project was sort of, I don't know if it was accidentally left out of the discussion on the fifteenth, but that second estimate was never presented to the board a second time on the, on May fifteenth.
Oh, okay, all right.
Chairman?
Yes.
I might suggest at this point, you go back and you write this up again with specific numbers, with specific agreements for the engineering so that they sign off on that and it's in an agreement of some sort, rather than, yeah, we'll do it. I think we need to just tighten it up a little bit. This is, this is a little too loose for me all over the board. Numbers are loose, engineering's loose. If you could just get a formal agreement that they would sign and present to us as a proposal, we could take action and I'd be more comfortable with those final numbers that way.
And it needs to be on the agenda as an action item. But what I'm getting concerned about, and somebody can tell me how big of an issue this is, are, by the time we get to our next meeting, are we getting a little late in the season or are they still going to have time to get stuff done?
They'll probably do it in the fall anyway, when it's drier.
Okay.
That would be my guess.
So we're okay postponing anything?
Mm-hmm.
So, and we're talking about enough money here, it might be worth his while to come, so we could ask him questions instead of you guessing as to what he intended.
So, I guess my question is, is the total cost to do the project on that bid, or is that just the bid for installing a new one and there's other costs of pulling out the old one?
The original one was for removing the other one and putting the new ones in. And the cost of the culvert.
Right.
For each site.
And is the bid we have, could you, is the bid we have here have everything included into it? Because it seems quite a bit different than what I thought we.
Mm-hmm. And again, the reason it's probably a little bit different, I was going, the original estimate was Josh's estimate, and what I told you for seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-one, that's coming off our two thousand eighteen bid from True North Steel. That's what we would pay for those culverts, because I said if they agree, we will be the ones purchasing them and be invoiced.
And I understand that portion of it, I just not understand the total bid cost of where it was before. I saw Norris's, that kind of stuff, but it seems like the original bid was different than this. It seemed like the original bid, it's a mobilization, they are removing the box culvert for two thousand bucks and then they're installing the new ones for two thousand. It just seems like the original, I don't know if this was the original one we got when Josh was here, or if this is.
I think Josh's was handwritten. The original one wasn't?
I don't think so.
The reason I have a little bit of sticker shock is because I only recall one, one project, one location, so.
All right, well, we had quite a few at one time and we still got some, and we got another one pending, Oslo Township, they didn't get theirs in today, but they'll be coming too for our culvert project.
And that's, yeah, that's why I think we should.
We almost need a township representative on the highway department to take care of all their stuff.
This, this is the one we just saw, so that's the same, this twelve.
Right.
That's the one that was presented also on May fifteenth with some writing on it. And then this one also was, came in on the, on April, back in April, middle of April.
And the two thousand of the increase is our cost increase for when we buy them?
Okay, so, when did Josh come in the first time?
April seventeen.
And these are the ones that he came in with?
Yes.
I just want to say, I myself, if everybody wants them all to come back, that's fine. I'm okay with providing these culverts that they're, and I think that we kind of indicated we'd do that. I know that this is coming back more because this might be our mistake as opposed to his mistake, since we've got all the documents there. I just hate to go back and say, well, you need to start all over. And I myself would be in favor of paying the seven, for the culverts that are listed, those five culverts.
I agree, because that's what we agreed to do and we also talked about the same with Oak Lake. Exactly.
The difference between Oak Lake was they're going to remove theirs before we make any decision on whether they need to be replaced or repaired. That's the difference there. And also, Oak Lake wanted ends put on, the flared ends, and we said no to that, so.
But again, Oak Lake wants us to pay ten thousand of the eleven thousand, and now we're, we're almost paying eighty percent of this replacement too, and so.
But I don't see how we can go back on what we said.
No, I understand, I understand, we're coming, I understand that, but I just think.
Even though it's changed.
And so it's, why wouldn't all the townships come in to us if we're going to pay ninety percent of the costs? I mean.
Well, it's if they qualify as a structure too. It's not every culvert they replace, it's only if they're, they qualify.
And it's not ninety percent of the cost. We're agreeing to provide culverts. And sometimes it'll be a big part of the cost and sometimes it might not be such a big part. And I think what we talked about is we would provide culverts because we didn't want to do the other part because of the liability issues, but.
Right.
We did, but I'd like to see the estimated amount for engineering, you know, when they give us these, I want to see what, I want to see everything they're paying.
Okay.
Would you all be comfortable with Dick going back and saying, we've got a consensus, I think, maybe not, I'm going to ask you that, on the culverts, but we don't have an action item, so we can't do anything with it today, and we need the final stuff, the cost, the estimates that show the engineering work.
Okay.
And then maybe that takes care of, would that work? And is it okay to say we're going to pay, I don't know that I'm hearing a consensus for all the culverts, but we're going to pay some money for culverts? We just don't know until we see all the numbers? How do you want him to approach Josh? That's what I want to know.
I don't feel like we can go back on what we said. We said we would do the culverts.
Okay.
At least, at least one of them.
Well, we said we'd do culverts. You know, and the fact that there's two projects and we misunderstood, I think we're, I think Leanne is right on, we misunderstood that there were two projects and we said we would do culverts and I think we cannot go back on our word. I think that's what we have to do.
So are we going to require them to hire an engineer then? So you can double the price of the culverts? The cost of the project almost.
Is that, and I wondered if that's where the forty-one thousand came from that Dick was talking about?
That was an estimate Dick had for.
From his contractor.
Right, that were similar to put, install another box culvert instead of replacing it with metal culvert.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, Dick can go out and size those culverts. I mean, as long as the landowners are in agreement with the flow and if they're installed correctly, I mean, but if they have to hire an engineer, I mean, you're talking quite a few more dollars towards the township, you know, the project.
But we.
But the township needs to sign off on the project, like Commissioner Bartley said too, to assume the responsibility of the project.
But we did say that they needed to do engineering. Both townships that have asked.
Right. And also with, with Josh, he specifically had asked me, what do I ask of the engineering firm that I want done? And I said, you need to verify that the flow line is correct, the elevation of the flow line, that the size is correct, and basically a drainage investigation of the area that... So that's, I'm sure he understands, and I guess, I don't know the gentleman, so I don't know whether it's something, but like Mike says, maybe it'd be best to get it more specific and pinpoint it?
Well, you've just defined the scope of engineering that you require, and I think that that needs to be in writing.
Okay.
And performed and signed off on.
Sure. So he can go back and tell Josh that, are we going to pay for the culverts, but we need to have something showing the engineering, because that was the second part of it, and they need to come back with an action item because we can't do anything till we have an action item in front of us?
I'm with you.
Are you okay on that, Commissioner Jensen?
That's fine, I just don't, I mean, we have qualified, I mean, Dick's qualified to go out and measure a pipe and establish flow line, I mean, I just, I feel it's an undue for this township to have to pay for an engineer to come out and put culvert in.
What's everybody else's position on that?
But the, but the township does need to take responsibility of the site once it's installed and completed.
Well, it's kind of my point, if, if we're responsible, then if there's a problem in the future, we're responsible. I just assume that the engineering study be done. If, if that's the scope of the project, shouldn't be too bad. Narrow it, do whatever you need to do to keep the expense down on it, obviously, but the township then signs off on, they did their engineering and not us, so to speak.
And that's what, we're talking out of both sides of our face here, because we said, we'll pay for the culverts, but they have to do engineering. That's what we said before. So now, how do we back up and say, well, no, we're not going to.
I believe we requested Josh to make sure his pipe or forty-foot was, length was sufficient in that area is what, why we had him go back.
Yeah, it would be my guess.
Commissioner Kerwin?
Let's keep moving forward, I guess.
All right. He needs to come back in. We need an action item, he needs to come back in. For me, on the engineering issue? For me on the engineering issue, what I don't want to have happen, and the whole reason to ask for some engineering, but that scope was fine with me, is to avoid the problem we have in Madera Township. I just don't want that, again, where they're installed and they're not at the right level, and there's a, a problem that goes on for forty years.
It is nine o'clock, too.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Does that give you enough, Dick, to get started with?
Sure, yep.
We're going, we're going to take a public hearing matter, and then I'll have you come back up, is that?
Okay, yep.
Okay, thank you. We have a scheduled agenda item at nine o'clock for the second reading and public hearing of ordinance two thousand eighteen dash oh four, an ordinance authorizing rezoning of the south two hundred and forty-five feet of the west two hundred and forty-six feet of the east four hundred and ninety-five feet of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section three, Township one oh nine north, range fifty west, Brookings County, South Dakota, located in Madera Township from an agricultural district to a joint jurisdiction R dash one A district. The ordinance reads, whereas Stephen W. and Sherry Hogland have made an application to the Brookings County zoning board to rezone property from agricultural district to joint jurisdiction R dash one A district, whereas the Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission, in a joint meeting with the Brookings City Planning and Zoning Commission, held a public hearing on May one, two thousand eighteen, whereas SDCL eleven dash two dash thirty requires the Brookings County Commission to adopt or reject the change, therefore be it ordained by the Brookings County, South Dakota, that the following property be rezoned from agricultural district to a joint jurisdiction R dash one A district. The south two hundred and forty-five feet of the west two hundred and forty-six feet of the east four hundred and ninety-fifth street of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section three, Township one oh nine north, range fifty west, Brookings County, South Dakota. Would we have a motion?
Move approval.
In the second?
Second for discussion.
Mr. Hill, do you want to address this? Actually, and just for the record, at this time, I'm opening the public hearing, the record should show that we have uh, no one appearing, no citizens and, and the applicants not, and then Mr. Hill, you could proceed.
Yes, my name is Robert Hill, and I'm the Brookings County Development Director. And just for the record, I did want to state that Mr. Hogland has contacted our office this morning and saying he's running a little bit late, but obviously it was published for nine o'clock, so we will continue on. This action item was heard in our May planning and zoning meeting as a joint hearing between the City of Brookings Planning Commission and the Brookings County Planning Commission, and it was unanimously voted to den, to recommend that this not be approved at the county commission. So. Are there any comments specifically about the meeting that was held? The, the purposes behind the public hearings, of course, this, it, it come almost down to a, a spot zoning type situation, it's so far away, it's not contiguous to the city limits, and and it's just, it's away by itself, and, and there's no other R one residences nearby and, and everything, and it just felt like it would be a spot, spot type zoning, which we really, we're trying to prevent. Right now, we do have a joint jurisdiction ordinance committee going on, which is totally separate, totally separate entity than this, but uh.
You answered my question, because I, I was going to ask you why, why they unanimously voted to not approve this, so that answers it.
And so in the Ag District, currently, they're not allowed to build to their, correct?
That is correct, there is one house allowed there, which they do have. It is a smaller than thirty-five acre, so they're allowed to have their one residence there, because it was there prior rezoning in nineteen seventy-five. In this instance, what happened is they wanted to rezone it to a, to an R one, which would allow a smaller lot size.
Any other questions for Mr. Hill?
With that R one, Mr. Hill, could they have built more than, on the size lot, could they have built more than one house if he rezoned it?
If they would have rezoned this property, they could have built the additional house that they was requesting.
Just one house? With the lot size that they're rezoning?
Yep.
That's pretty much spot zoning.
How long, how late did the applicant say he was going to be?
If you mind, do you mind if I bring Mr. Hogland up?
That's fine.
This is Richard Hogland, my deputy director.
Yes, applicant called, said he was, was working, was going home to change clothes, and was going to be here.
Good timing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me before I step down?
Nope, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hogland, would you like to come forward and talk about your request? When you come up, would you announce your name on the microphone? We'll have you have a seat and talk directly into the microphone.
Just like in court, right?
Just like in court.
Steve Hogland. I've requested rezon some land just west of my house, my son plans to build. It's just, it's going to be, we want to rezon just like, like just short of one point four acres. And I understand that's less than the thirty-five acres required, but we do have a little over forty acres out there, and it's not like it's out in the middle of nowhere. You know, within a mile of us, there's, you know, two trailer courts, school. I don't know if there's a hundred houses, but there's, you know, quite a few houses around. And it's, you know, it's going to be right on the edge of the flood plain, but we are going to haul a bunch of fill and stuff in.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hogland? Anything else you'd like to say?
Well, well, sorry I'm late, but I just learned of this like twenty minutes ago.
You said your intentions are building a house, your son building a house there?
My son, yeah, we're looking, you know, three, four rears down the road. He's going to build, well, his plans in our are to build like a split foyer house, and then just, you know, basically build it on, you know, just above what the grade is now, and then all fill in around it.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Hill, could you address this applicant's request and how it differs, for example, on Tuesday night, um, we did that manufactured home situation. And I just want to make it clear, because sometimes the county does allow, not in the joint jurisdiction area necessarily, but in the county, um, less than thirty-five acres for a family member.
Yes, ma'am, what, what you're referring to, and I don't have my zoning ordinance, so I can't get the exact conditional use number down, but you're referring to a secondary home, which is a, which is a manufactured home slash mobile home, and there's a requirement that once a, that individual stops living there, it has to be removed within ninety days. So it's a, it's a temporary type house versus a stick-built house. And that's not required, that doesn't require rezoning of property, whereas this, this is a rez, a rezoning request. So we're actually talking apples and oranges here. This has, I mean, this is requesting to rezone the property. Once it's rezoned R one A, it could be done whatever, whatever the zoning ordinance has R one A in a joint jurisdiction allows, it could be done. I mean, in, in this instance, he's stating the one, one residence and everything else, but whatever the requirement of one R one A is, it, it could be done to this property, whereas the conditional use permit that was issued Tuesday night was strictly a, a manufactured home slash mobile home. It's good there as long as, as long as the family member or farmhand works there. Ninety days after, after that ceases, then it has to be removed. In this one, it's a permanent, by being rezoning, it's a permanent action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions about that? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other testimony pro or con the motion? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it for discussion by the commission. Any discussion?
Well, you know, the spot zoning part is, is, is kind of what's happening here, and it's not something I think we want to start doing on a consistent basis, or set the precedent of, of allowing this to happen in the, there. I know it's closer to Brookings, and I know that there, but if, it's like that thirty-five acre rule, if we start changing there, it's going to spread throughout, and I think we got to stay consistent with that. Um, there until something does actually change in our ordinances, if they do, so. Um, I'm, I'm going to follow the lead of the, our zoning commission and, and vote no for it.
And I trust our citizen board, and I agree, we can't, while it's unfortunate, I don't think we can start spot zoning, you know, if it was contiguous with something, I might look at it differently, but the fact that it's out there by itself, I can't vote for it.
Again, I, spot zoning is just a tough thing to, to start, and it's a tough thing to get out of once you start, so it's, it's appropriate not to begin spot zoning. And in this particular case, it may be years before it's contiguous and will allow other types of things to happen, but uh, at this point, it just doesn't fit the zoning ordinances.
Commissioner Jensen, anything you wanted to say?
I agree with the rest of the commission.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the vote, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Miller?
No.
Krogman?
No.
Bartley?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Pierce?
I'm abstaining in this matter.
Motion fails.
Thank you for coming in. You can.
If I understand this right, I can predict my building site, except five acres aside, have a thirty-five, and then we can.
I, I have to tell you that I had that exact same thought, and that might be something you want to discuss with Mr. Hill. Because of the length of time that your house has been there, I think you would have some other options on how to do this to accomplish what your goal is. But you should talk to Mr. Hill about that.
Why don't you step down to the office once you're done here, Mr. Hogland, and Richard will, will talk to you about that, about your options.
Thank you. And we're going to go back to the Highway Department.
Okay. After uh, visiting about the township project, uh, had job interviews for heavy equipment operate, uh, operator's position. Uh, one of our gentlemen on the crew uh, was promoted, Nick Norgard. So that leaves an equip, excuse me, an equipment operator's position that would be open. Um, kind of a follow-up to that, um, and I'll just wanted to see what the board's thoughts were. Um, and if, if it's favorable, I would like to start a formal request to hire like two temporary positions. Not only do we have this equipment operator's position uh, vacant right now, um, we also had a, a, a employee that was injured uh, at home over the weekend, and he most likely will find out today for sure, but most likely will be um, off for a considerable period of time. Um, and what we're running into, we're getting into mowing season and um, jockeying uh, equipment around and getting prepared for the bigger projects coming up this summer, and with the short two people, we just really could use some help. Um, and so I, I don't think, because we'll eventually uh, interview and replace the equipment operator, I don't think there's a need to hire anybody for a longer than just a temporary situation. So, but we could use it, just food for thought. And then um, also yeah, as we get later in the fall, then we get the two guys from the weed department back, so that relieves it. So I would anticipate in a realistic request, um, if I could get somebody on board by like the first of July and keep them till the end of September, that would be the window of time I would be looking at. And also the people that I would interview or um, possibly hire on, uh, make it clear to them that it's definitely a temporary uh, type assignment.
Just a quick question, the two people you've loaned to the, the weed department, would it be more efficient for you to take one or two of those people back and allow the weed department to go out and hire its temporary help? Or is that not work well? I don't know where the experience level is on either.
The big, the biggest advantage to that idea, Mike, would be that um, they're CDL licensed. I, I have no idea whether the ones we will get applying would have a CDL. If they don't have it, they would be limited to like mowing, um, helping install culverts, uh, patching, things like that, they wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily have equipment operating ability. If we got the guys from the weed department, if they were uh, needed to haul gravel or chip seal or whatever, having the license would allow them to do that. So I don't know what uh, the weed supervisor, uh, what her status is, you know, as far as needing her people, I don't know, but.
I can tell you. I'll be happy to. She is in the thrills of her, of her busy season. We can't, we can't pull those guys. Um, and she's already down a person anyway. And so I think we would be far better off to just give him
Hire on his.
permission to do a temporary hire for that, that period of time. And that's where you need them anyway, isn't it? In, in your mowing and moving stuff around?
Right.
If you can get another equipment operator.
Right.
And how does that fit into your budget?
Well, uh, since Gary Norgard, since the first of the year, we haven't paid him, and Nick was already on board, and he got promoted, so we're not paying an equipment operator. So I think we'll have more than enough money um, to cover the three months that we would have someone on board.
I think it's a great idea, get, get somebody to do some mowing and general upkeep and help with culverts and um, in the past, I believe Misty, if the, while they're sealing, if they're short, I think she's had a couple, let a couple guys come back and help you seal coat, haven't they?
Um, on the windy days and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, if they needed help, they kind of worked back and forth and.
They can run rollers, they can do packing and stuff, so.
How many are you requesting, Dick? One or two? Two?
Well, ideally two, for that three-month period, July, August, September, yeah, three months, so.
So you're not looking, you're not looking for a full-time equipment operator then?
We will, but see, we got to wait sixty days, because if he, with union contract. So we've pretty well used up the window of time.
I'm with you now, yeah, I'm with you now, okay.
It gets better every day, I mean, you're living the dream.
And this is something we just need a consensus on, is that correct?
Uh, yes, I, I mean, we could go through the formal request to fill vacancy process, but at that point, that's another two weeks down the road. I mean, if you want that paperwork submitted, we could submit it at that time, but if you want to give him a consensus to start moving forward now, we sure can, but we probably should still do that request to fill vacancy paperwork, do it, to do it the proper way, but let's, we need to get this moving now.
Yeah.
Versus waiting another two weeks.
Is anyone opposed to Dick finding two temporary people for the season?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then on um, May seventeenth, uh, Swiftel is starting their project right north of our shop. Um, they've been very uh, cooperative and helpful, keeping us informed. Most everything has been relocated, uh, never interfered with any of our operations or um, phone service and all that stuff, and electricity, blah, 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 and um, also um, they've been very good about working with us as far as the way the drainage will handle the surface runoff, and I think it'll be a big plus for, for our uh, building and grounds around there to the way they're going to deal with the water. Um, in May twenty-second, I signed the agreements with Banner and Geotech for the preservation grants I signed the agreements with Banner and Geotech for the preservation grants, uh, for 2018. What that does is make sure that our geotechnical testing is done before we start our preservation projects this summer. Uh, next Tuesday will be the bid opening for the preservation grant projects. And so we'll have a good idea of what the cost of all three of those projects will be. We're still, uh, right now Holloway Construction is about a week behind, so we're looking at the last week in June of possibly moving in and starting those, uh, deck replacement on 16 in our two smaller structures. Um, then, uh, um, talked to the people on the 23rd in Hendricks Township about their road signs and I think we, I have finally got them to understand what our responsibility should be. And on the 24th, uh, you could see that I followed up with them and, and they finally reached the conclusion that it is their, uh, sign to install. And the 911 signs we'll take care of, just like we do everybody else's. Visited with Justin Brandt of Novita about the parking and signage location and keeping the trucks delivering to Novita using the paved roads. Very, um, nice guy to, to work with and they're in the process of getting the signs and looking for suggestions on how they could possibly improve the communication with their clients. Um, and I think it'll work out in, in, in a positive manner. Um, then on, uh, May 24th, um, oh, I did that already. May 29th, uh, we were finishing up the ditch work where we had, uh, installed a culvert up by North Grove and checking on the status of our equipment. Uh, the truck now will not be in till probably the middle to the end of June. Uh, if you remember right, uh, we ordered that in December. Um, the same way with the loader. They, they don't have any idea yet of when that possibly will be in, but that was ordered in December also. So it's just a, a waiting game and, and at least we got the proper stuff done so that when they do come in, we'll be, uh, ready to move forward. And also we're working with Jenna to put our stuff together for the, um, surplus sale, which this year will be a little bit, uh, geared with heavier equipment this year, I should say, than what we've had in the past. Uh, crew's been doing shouldering, uh, improvement projects. Uh, we started on Highway 77 with a, a gravel. Uh, Highway 5 south of Volga, we're doing that with clay and dirt, a mixture that, that really, I think, looks fantastic. And the, the crew has been doing a wonderful job. And just so you know, that's using our machine we bought last year. It's called a road widener and it meters the material right out there and you don't have the mess, you don't have the excess waste of, uh, material. Um, if you ever drive down on 77 South of Brookings, you'll notice that it's a really nice looking, uh, finished product. Um, also, we stopped on 77 north of the two bridges, obviously, because they'll be tore up hopefully in the near future. And other than that, um, we started installing culverts, uh, for 2018. And that's the first step in our process of our series of things we do when we're making road improvements. We install the culverts in 2018. We'll do the patching either at the end of the year or beginning of next. Then we'll do the chip seal over the top and it's, we're not re-disturbing that, uh, once it's done. So it seems to be working real well and we're just replacing obviously the ones that are deteriorated or, or, uh, need the attention. Other than that, I don't have anything unless you have some questions for me.
I just wanted to mention how nice the shoulders do look on, on, uh, Old 77. I do travel that road frequently and it's, it's perfect. It really looks nice.
Thanks.
It does. Looks good.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Vicki?
Good morning. To give you an update from our office, um, been working with Stacy and other departments on budget, so we will be ready for the budget hearings next week. We've had interviews this week and the end of last week for our open position. And we've got really good candidates, so we'll be picking a candidate and hopefully getting somebody hired by at least next week. So we're, we're doing good there. We have two of our staff going out to the deputy workshop, um, next week in Pierre. They leave on Tuesday and the workshop is all day Wednesday. And they will be attending the motor V portion of it mainly, um, because we are getting a no, new motor V system starting next year, sometime between June and September, depending on how that all goes, but we will have a new motor V system. And, um, the kiosk, which has been a thorn in our side for a long time, it still continues to be. Um, Bit came over, um, and checked out the sheriff's office. We've had multiple people from Pierre come and we thought we were good to go. Well, now they've made different, um, specs and it's not ADA compliant. So that is a no-go. So we are looking hopefully for another place, but that is our new... And no, it was never there, but, um, we've had not, multiple people from Pierre check and, and the last person that came and they conversed with the people that would be putting it in and they decided it wasn't ADA compliant. So, so we're back to square one. So if you know of any other place we can check, we will sure do that. So, and, um, then the election we had this week and that, that went great. And before, when we've had elections, we've had Dick, we've had, uh, many people helping. Um, like on Sunday, they would come in and have to put things together and deliver between Sunday and Monday, our staff, along with Dick's staff. And with our new purchases, with the express votes, they're smaller than what we've had before for the handicapped accessible. So they could take them after the school. And also the voting booths that had to be, normally, um, our staff had to set them up. We have the cardboard that sat up on the, um, tables, like if you voted, you saw. So we didn't have to have anybody delivering this year. So it was just slick as ever. So I think that the workers really appreciated all the changes we've made too. So I have to commend the staff. They have done an excellent job. We had, they had two schools for the election workers and that went well and an absentee school. And both Jenna and Kristen were involved with that. So they have done great. And everything went good. We were, got out of there a little after 10. We couldn't rele, release any results till quarter to 10, but we were done counting by probably 9:15, 9:20. So everything went, went well. So, so that was good. And, um, the surplus sale, that is set up for, I don't think we've set a date, but it's set up for hopefully in September. So Jenna's starting to work on that. And if you are down around our office stopping, um, we have had different art that has been on the walls. And we just had at the end of the school year, uh, Mr. Livingston brought in a whole new group of pictures that the art students from the high school did. And it, it just adds so much to our front office. It's just great. People enjoy looking at them. It's got the name of the people that, um, did the pictures. And, um, it, it is a great addition to our office. And they change them every so often. So you'll have to stop down and look at them. And we do have some talented people in the county, that's for sure. So, any questions? Anybody has?
I just, just a quick one and we've got a scheduled agenda item, but there was a little glitch with the state program in the election and computers went down, but we came back. Could you just tell everybody about that?
Yeah. And Kristen can probably explain too more when she comes for the canvassing. But yeah, we had, there was a glitch in the computers going down, but, um, they basically came back up. They signed in. There was no voters that were turned away. There was not any lapse of time and we were just, we really did it without any problem.
And did I understand that was statewide?
Yes.
And, and we recovered quickly. Some other counties, they had to go after seven, so...
Right. And that's why, instead of, um, not re, releasing results at eight, we had to go to 9:45. So, so yeah, there were some problems and it, you know, Kristen can explain it better, but yeah, we didn't have any problems. It, it just went, went well.
You know, I, I'd just like to commend your group because I've been in there watching your process when it's happening and it's a slick deal. You guys are good. You do a great job. And, you know, I'm, I'm happy we've got these new smaller machines for you to, to handle and, um, good job. Thank you.
Yeah. It, they, they've done great. And with the training for the election workers, we can't thank the election workers enough because that is a long day and they don't get paid that great for doing that. And they do it more for just...
Well, they're social. They're very cheerful and they're very helpful.
They are. They are.
It's a good experience.
It is. It is. And so it's great for Brookings County to have such good election workers. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have a scheduled agenda item for 9:30, the Week of Impact presentation. And if the presenters would come forward, go ahead, state your name and speak directly into the microphone if you would. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Einin. Uh, I'm a member of the Week of Impact Subcommittee with United Way. I know Heidi Gullickson really wanted to be here, but she's enjoying her week of vacation. So she was disappointed she couldn't be here today. Um, there's a group of us who are working on starting the Week of Impact with United Way. United Way is really focused on trying to, uh, really look at how can we be not just please fund us, give us your money organization. And so really looking at how can we expand that to putting some hands-on volunteerism, uh, reaching out to the community to support, really impacting the community. When we talked about that, we really were passionate about getting the county involved. And so we wanted to come and talk to you today specifically about how can we, um, get involved in the different townships when we look at this effort. So with Week of Impact, what that looks at is different entities will be able to submit projects, um, needing for maybe volunteer hours, uh, different, if there's donation items needed, different, um, financial components needed, really looking at some innovative or out-of-the-box projects to enhance maybe that organization or different parks. Um, looking at some of those county aspects in those townships. Are there some creative ways to get the townships involved to get some completed projects done that could really make a lasting impact? Uh, Week of Impact is kind of unique because there is a funding component to it as well. Um, so different entities or township leaders, if they're wanting to, uh, look at submitting projects. There is a funding component where they're could, they could identify, we need this amount of money in order to complete this project. Um, for example, maybe, um, an addition, uh, we have like, uh, somebody who's going to submit some garden boxes. Um, so cost for materials or maybe cost for paint if wanting to paint different park equipment to update the equipment. Um, really looking at any type of project that could benefit, uh, the township or the community as we look at moving forward with us. This will be the first time in Brookings. And so we know as far as different examples of projects, there aren't one in existence. Um, this is something that is done in Huron. And so they do look at, um, you know, when it comes to state fairgrounds, different, um, county parks, different, um, county projects, like books for the Dolly Parton Library expansion into those county addresses. Um, that was something that was kind of a project with, uh, the Day of Impact. They only do a day and we're kind of thinking a whole week would be necessary. Um, we're, we're really wanting to get this information to the county leaders to say it shouldn't be just within Brookings City because United Way really impacts the whole county and we want to engage the county. We do have on that flyer that I know I just sent Stacy yesterday, so I apologize, I couldn't get it to you sooner. Uh, it wasn't completed sooner. But there is an online application that entities and, uh, leaders are able to fill out in order to request different projects. And then the Week of Impact will be held the September 16th through, through that 22nd, um, date. And how we're doing that is so with submitted projects, um, the helpline volunteer coordinator will help create a website listing and volunteer groups, um, or individuals will be able to go on and essentially select what project they want to do. Um, so for example, ICAP is going to look at putting together hygiene kits. And so that will be something that they list as their project. Um, so the domestic violence shelter is wanting some updates to some different playground equipment, um, at different locations. There are a couple foster homes that are looking at, um, some landscaping things to kind of help make their foster homes more welcoming. Really just looking at any type of project that can benefit, uh, the county as we look at providing a Week of Impact. So I know that's a brief summary and it's so new, it's kind of like, what does that look like? But really just wanting to look at creatively, how can we engage the townships and really reach out to the county?
Anybody have any questions?
Great idea.
And are you sending that flyer to the township supervisors then?
We are open to any advice as far as how we can. Um, we just thought this was kind of a, a good first step.
Well, I think we can provide those township supervisors you should send a letter to, but you're also including all the communities in Brookings County?
Right.
Does the United Way at this point in time fund projects in other communities already?
Um, Heidi would have to be here to, to answer that.
Yeah.
Um, but because they do cover all of Brookings County, um, our subcommittee specifically wanted to look at how do we engage all of those communities?
So it's not just townships, as you'd mentioned, it's also those communities.
I'm working on my verbiage.
You could get a lot, a lot of requests if you go to the communities, yeah, in addition to the townships. Uh, but I think it's a, a great start. It's just, it might blossom to something bigger than what you might imagine, but that's the point.
Right. Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Yep.
We appreciate your coming.
Thank you for your time.
Chris, you would be up next.
I forgot during my report, just one thing. Marty was, um, helping. We appreciate his help. He was there from six o'clock till 10 and he helped at the garage and carried things and everything. So we do want to thank him for his help too.
My list is pretty short. Holy cow. I gotta put some more thought into these. I just wanted to let the board know, um, we attended our SDAO conference in Rapid City. We had our five appraisers attend that. Um, that is a requirement. We have to attend at least three every five years. Um, so it's kind of hit and miss. You know, one year we might have one or two that don't go. It depends on their personal. I prefer to have everybody there because there's usually some pretty good training and some other discussions. You know, this year they did some, uh, they did some tours of wood milling and things like that. That's not something we see here. And it's not really applicable, but it's good to expand your knowledge and, and have a general basis. Anyway, we did have one snafu. When we travel, especially traveling that far, we used to always take two vehicles. And Joyce, at one point in time, decided, well, we can all ride together. And lo and behold, the first time we do that, we have a family emergency and somebody has to come back and now we're stranded four people. So we, my policy will be in, and if there's three or less of us going, we'll take one. Four or more, we're probably going to take two for those events. Lo and behold, we took two and we had a vehicle breakdown on the way out. We had a fuel pump go out. So we had to have it towed from wall to Rapid City. Fortunately, First District came through and happened to stop there for a rest stop and picked up a couple. Another county, I forget the other county, picked up a couple more. And so quite expensive, but, um, Rapid So quite expensive, but, um, Rapid City Chevrolet was able to replace the fuel pump and everything for our return on Friday. So it worked out good. But yeah, it was a little bit stressful. I was already out there with Reed and then I get a call, we're stuck. And I'm like, ah, I don't know what I'm gonna do here. How can I? Well, you should have brought the other vehicle for starters. But anyway, that's all good. Um, school was announced and, uh, I submitted, or you will be getting in your next one, our travel request application for that. Um, with that, we have a conflict, which I wouldn't say it's a conflict for, for us and for budgeting. Jacob and I will not be going to ProVal this year because school falls on the ProVal conference date. So save some travel and some money there. I'm a little disheartened, but on the upside of that, I skipped school last year to go to ProVal because Jacob wanted to go to school. So it, it worked out well. This year, however, they're offering a course that, um, both Jacob and I are signing up for and hopefully we get into it. It's an I double A O four hundred. It's the, um, administration portion of I double A O. And as I've let the board know, we're required to do three schools every five years, one of which has to be an I double A O. This year happens to be a very good and applicable one for us. That doesn't come around very often. And on a side note of that, for Jacob and I, I've pushed him to go through I double A O and, and do those higher level courses even when he doesn't have to. This will be both mine and Jacob's fifth I double A O course. With the change, because there's only a limited amount of courses, if you're in the, in the association for twenty-five years, let's say, every five years, you gotta do an I double A O, an I double A O, an I double A O. There's only about five or six, probably seven that are applicable to South Dakota because we don't do real property appraisal or personal property appraisals or some other, a lot of us aren't G I S. There's G I S ones. So you're really limited. You're down to like six. Well, you gotta do one and then it comes up again. Well, I have a requirement. I have to do that one again. I have to do that one again. And we brought that up and broached that as an association of when a doctor takes Algebra One, he doesn't have to go back every five years and retake Algebra One. So the association a few years ago voted that once you have hit five different I double A O courses and successfully completed them, that requirement goes away from you. So for Jacob and I in our office, after, if we're both allowed to do and, and have room in this course and we do this, this will both be our fifth. So at this point forward, Jacob and I will no longer have the requirement of fulfilling an I double A O course for the remainder of our time in, in the association. So we'll be required to do two courses every five years. So it's a, it's an incentive to push people to do that as well as get educated. So just, uh, I was, I was enlightened that this course came. I've kind of been waiting for this one to come because it's very applicable for office administration. We're starting, some of our appraisers are, are kind of wrapping up their reviews with apartments and waiting on a few stragglers and getting information. You know, when apartments are tough because we don't want to bother every single one at different days. So we group them and say, when can we see your apartments? And some of them scheduling, you know, we've got one scheduled for three weeks out. Let's go look at these five or six apartments. So, um, they're jumping into the lakes now. So we're, we're going forward with that as the second part of our summer review and that'll take some time. That's a door-to-door knock on doors, every single lake cabin, every property. So they're starting to jump on that. Then the last thing that I have on my list that I wanted to discuss with the board is the Prairie Aquitae Volga Tiff Project. That's in Volga Township. I've been working with, I think it's Doherty and some other people. They've been calling me. They wanted preliminary, Department of Revenue's been calling me, wondering what, where I'm gonna be on a base value for that new Tiff district. They want to know what's my proposed increment value, starting, so they can estimate, um, taxes for bonding and things like that. And it's all so much up in the air. But one question that Department of Revenue, Wendy Semler emailed me and said, this is gonna be a very unique property. How are you going to assess that? And I was like, in my head right away, my first response was, well, it's, it's buildings. You know, I, I need to know how big they are, what they're made of, what their wall height is, what their commercial use is inside. It's not really that much of an issue. And it's been dwelling in my mind. And with this Tiff being in play, they're gonna want the value rather, as large as they can for increment to repay those bonds faster. And I've, I've got a couple of calls into them to see where they want to go. And I've actually talked with another commercial appraiser yesterday and, and had his feel on it. And he just basically advised me, he says, what's your comfort level? This is specialized. There is going to be a lot of equipment in there that does do work, that is considered personal property. But he said, from his perspective, there's a lot of equipment that's in there that does work, that he would consider as real estate. So he says, you're better off to do this the right way the first time and get the value. So with that, I don't know where we're going to be. There's some conversations. This isn't gonna happen overnight. But there is a possibility that I would ask the board potentially down the road that we might look at doing an outside specialist appraisal to come in. We've done that with Varisan when they were done. We've done that with the soybean processors, um, hired an outside appraisal firm. The thought process is if, if it's valid and it's warranted, and I'll be the first to tell you, if we get into specified here, we're not certified to do those appraisals. We don't have that knowledge base. Um, and that's one of the things we have to disclose whenever we do an appraisal. The buildings, no problem. The structures, no problem. The square footage, the loading docks, the, the storage bins, the paving, we're good to go. If, if this Tiff District project is looking at, and right now the preliminary that I sketched up, they sent me some blueprints. Just for your knowledge, the preliminary that I sketched up, we're about three, right around three million, um, structure value off of a blueprint. I have no idea. I mean, there's things missing, there's things added. Just a quick sketch view, put in some uses, see how it spits out. It would generate about sixty-eight thousand a year in property taxes. So the appraiser said, hey, you know, you pay for an appraisal, but if your value goes up and you gain those property taxes, you recoup that value over time. So I just wanted to plant that in, in your minds to think about and I'll keep you advised and where the conversations go, what they're looking for. You know, and I'm really in a rock and a hard place because I have to do it fair and equal. They want value. And, and I, and I talked with the appraiser about that too. I said, Northern Beefbackers plant up in Aberdeen. That big Tiff up there, that got in a whirlwind of trouble. The director at that time says, I could put whatever on it. They want, the more I can put on it, the better. Well, that's not the right way of thinking. But it's a two-hundred-million-dollar project with her and you've got six-hundred-million total cost. Higher the better, higher the better. We need increment. We want to repay these bonds. And then it went belly up and all of a sudden the county's in trouble because you've got two-hundred-million on it. You know, when the bottom fell out and investors fell short and all of a sudden it's selling for six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars and then you're on the other side of the fence. So it is important to do it right the first time. I don't know how big of a project this is. It, it's not a Varisan and it's not a soybean processor. So I think a lot of their sixty-million-dollar investment is a lot of equipment and things like that. So I just wanted to plant the seed that down the road, we may be looking at doing something, hiring somebody. And I'll research probably who did the soybean processor plant and get some contacts. Just kind of get some ideas of what the cost would be. I would say spitballing would probably be ten to twelve thousand dollars for an appraisal. But we'll wait and see when we cross that bridge. I just wanted to throw it out there and.
I'm gonna ask one quick question on that because we're late for, uh, scheduled agenda item. But when you talk about the personal property that you're gonna consider real property, are you talking fixtures?
I, no, the personal property would be anything that moves, any like augers, any, uh, any machinery, conveyor belts, things like that. That's all the personal property that.
And are they giving you the purchase price cost to use in your calculations or no?
Not at this time, no, no. They basically sent me blueprints and said, sketch this up, tell us what it's gonna be worth. And it's not a blueprint that I need. It's an engineering blueprint. I don't need to know that the, the back stairwell, the treads are six inches by eight inch. And it was a lot. It was CAD drawings. It took me about four hours going through, trying to pick pieces out, just to even figure out what I'm sketching. So I, I've emailed that off and I hadn't heard back from them yet. So.
Anybody else have a question?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have a nine forty-five scheduled agenda item, a request to close Broadway Street, County Road twenty-three in Aurora for the Gala Days on August fourth. Do we have anybody appearing on this? Come on up. State your name on the record and talk into the microphone if you would please.
My name is Pat Tingle. I'm the chairman of the AEC. It's Aurora Event Committee. Um, that we just actually changed our names last year. So, uh, we put on the Gala Day commit, or, uh, Gala Days over in Aurora. Um, last year we came to the board and asked to close down Broadway for our street dance. Basically, we closed it the whole day, um, from Pine all the way up to Front Street. You do have the map there. Um, basically we had the detour basically around the town, um, through Rasmus. And they had the chance either to go Madison, um, and then down to Pine and over to Lovejoy, or we did all the way to Lilac and down to Lovejoy, um, and then out of town. Um, we have reached out to, uh, the Valero, Navida and the elevator in town to make sure that they were, um, still aboard that we did that. We did not get any negative feedback on it, um, but we have not really heard if they were okay, um, positively yet. Um, Navida, um, last year was just getting started, so they didn't have trucks coming in, but they didn't feel this year would be any problem either. Um, Valero is one of our big sponsors, so they don't know what we're all doing. And, uh, like I said, they have not really responded in a definite yes, but they haven't said no. Um, and the elevator last year, um, had no problem with it because they really, on Saturdays, it was mostly spring and they had no problems just going around town or out on the gravel roads. So, um, we, I reached out to, uh, Sergeant Pike. Um, I don't know if he talked to Marty or not on, uh, the issues or any things that they had. But, um, I, again, we didn't hear anything negative from last year's shutdown. So we were just gonna, uh, request again for the second year to do this, um, before we could have our street dance on Broadway at that night. So on August fourth. Um, our shutdown request would have been from, uh, Saturday, the fourth at seven AM to Sunday, um, at two AM on Sunday morning. So.
Sheriff, um, any concerns or any issues that happened last year that we should be thinking about?
I, I don't recall any issues. Uh, so I have no, I have no problems with it.
Anyone else?
I'll make the motion that we allow them to close down, uh, Broadway for Gala Days from seven AM to Sunday at two AM.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Yep, no problem.
Bob, you're up next.
Good morning again. I think it's still morning. The, uh, for the department, we had a tri-state meeting down in Sioux Falls on May sixteenth. May seventeenth, I went over to Metro. We had a, it was a regional emergency operations center exercise. A finance department individual was scheduled to attend, but they had an illness. So it was basically me out there and what it was, was our, our Tin County Emergency Management Region. We all came in and we ran an emergency operations center. It's always good to see how other people operate. May twenty-third, we had a joint jurisdiction meeting, nine thirty in the community room. We're still plugging away. I just got an email today from Mike Struck. The, uh, we're on a mining Subcommittee, me, Mr. Struck and Mr., for life of me, I forget his name until later, but, uh, out of banners and, uh, Mr. Moore, Scott Moore out of, out of banners. And we'll be meeting later this week or early part of next week to try to get some of the mining stuff worked out on that. I did take vacation from the afternoon of May twenty-third until May twenty-eighth. The office operated just fine without me. My deputy did a good job in my absence. May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, we had a local emergency planning committee meeting. We ended up holding that in the day's end. We had a slight scheduling malfunction and, uh, we'll work it out for the next time. June first, I, which was last Friday, I traveled down to Yankton County. We've got this, uh, USDOT Technical Assistance Grant and we've, we've gotta do two tabletop exercises before September thirtieth. The first one, I laid a postcard on each individual's desk today of June thirtieth. The first one's gonna be in Alexandria, South Dakota. And then the second one will be down in Yankton County. I, we don't, the dates almost set down there. I'll have a date for you on the next one on that. That'll be later in September. If that one doesn't go through, we'll have a real quick one. But, uh, we expect everything. Everything's coming in place on that. There is some traveler. I haven't, uh, some of the travels, since I'm taking my privately-owned vehicle, we, we can't use the technical assistance money. I can't use anything that's getting state and local agreement funding for. So basically I'm driving my personal vehicle and I'm keeping track and I'm gonna turn in a generic travel thing, listing dates, times, miles, everything that I've done for your approval. And then that will be submitted to the DOT to get, to get our, our money back. So you, you don't necessarily see me driving our, our county emergency management truck to a meeting for this technical assistance grant because we can't. We, we can't confuse the two federal grants. I know that, that a little bit's confusing. And, um, June fifth, we had a planning meeting. It went well. We, uh, had one item that was taken off the agenda and added to July. Other than that, the meeting went well. We did have one variance denied. And, um, you know, when it comes to variance, we, we tell individuals when they come in the office, it's, you have to have a hardship. You have to be able to prove your hardship. If you can't, the zoning board or Board of Adjustment has, has the option of not approving it. So it's just the way it goes in, in those things. Ordinance review was conducted yesterday with the state's attorney, Commissioner Paris Richard and myself. We're still plugging away on that. June thirtieth, once again, so the date's been set. We had a couple radio issues come up during the past two weeks. The first one is I got a call from, uh, actually I got the call from dispatch, but our south repeater went down. That's the one down by cyanide that I paid to have put in in two thousand thirteen. And Sioux Falls two-way came up and, and, um, the batteries went bad. Now you realize that's been up there five years, so it's had backup batteries for five years and the battery just basically swallowed up and blew up on us. So we had to have that replaced. I had that replaced and that bill will be coming in shortly. And then Tuesday, we had our siren test, warning siren test. And there we found the north repeater wasn't working. So we contacted Van Tech Communications, who does the north repeater, and they came up, reset it, didn't fix the problem the first time. So Wednesday, we got hold of them again and now the, the problem has been fixed. It, uh, I heard them on the radio. One advantage, we have a radio in my office. I can tell when they're doing the test. And I heard yesterday that they finally got in there and that they was working. We finally got communications from up north coming down. So I know the north repeater works. I don't have a bill for the north repeater yet. We'll be getting it in shortly. Budget hearings next week. Uh, my Emergency Operations Command trailer, of course, we bought that in two thousand four. I want to say it's got a trailer leak, so later this summer, I'm gonna get up with some black tar and hopefully I don't fall off the thing and we'll, we'll patch whatever leaks we can find on it. And then another document I passed out to you earlier today was, it was brought to, I was given a request by my liaison for the Planning Commission to investigate the, the possibility of conducting televising planning meetings, planning Board of Adjustments slash Planning Commission meetings. So I typed up this nice little report and. Okay, basically, we'll, we'll go down here real fast. Most of you didn't have a lot of time to, to read it. But, uh, the city of Brookings, their Planning Commission does publicize their, their planning meetings. Brookings County at this time, we record our, our planning meetings. It's by our bylaws and our, our Brookings County Planning Commission, the bylaws, which is approved by the Brookings County Commission. We do maintain a recording for each meeting and those recordings have been used in the past to, to be in case of, of court cases. We send those recordings in and they get transcribed officially by whoever transcribes things officially and, and they've been used in court cases. So we do have the requirement to record our meetings continuously. So we do have the requirement to record our meetings continuously and, and we'll continue doing that one way or the other. If, if it goes to televising, then I believe we could just use the televising part, you know, we don't have to duplicate. I don't think we need to have DVDs of the meeting and then televised copies of the meetings. I think we should just be able to have one, one recorded meeting, but that would be up, up to the lawyers, of course. During, during our regular meeting, our Deputy Director sets, basically where Ms. Stepherson's sitting right now, and my Office Manager sets where Counselor is sitting now, and they run the meeting for me. I sit over here on the, on the side over here. And technically, the, technically, I'm the Secretary of the Planning Commission, but I have delegated that authority to my, my main planner, which is my deputy. And he gives a staff report for each agenda item. The Office Manager manages the flow of records. Basically, records, as, as we go to a new topic, folders keep getting passed back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. That's the way our, we conduct our meetings. I set off over on the side and, and I conduct off, off-mic discussions with the first planning district representative typically who comes down and anyone else. Typically, we've got, our alternates to the zoning board might be sitting over there, or if there's a county commissioner attending our meetings, sometimes they sit over there and, and I have discussions over on, on that side. I did have a discussion with Mr. Plowman from the county, I said Development Department, that's actually the, the County Commission Department, to obtain details on what it actually takes to record a meeting. And I sat down and basically typed up two options. These are, these are options that I, I sat there and looked at. One option would be to have the AV portion, audio visual portion, done by a, a member from the County Commission Department, the IT staff, basically running the meeting. We continue, we're, we continue running our meetings the way we do now. That would, and each meeting would be published online, it would be in the proper format. That a way, if the system goes down halfway in the middle of a meeting, I'm not calling someone up to come in the middle of the night because they've gotta be recorded. So if, if the recording shuts down halfway in the meeting, we basically go on recess until we get the system back up or we come back in another day because we need to, we need to have that digital copy of what's going on. And I estimated, after discussion with some other people, it'd probably be four hours per month for a regularly scheduled meeting. Now, if you have a special meeting or whatever, typically, if we have a special meeting, the applicant will pay for the special meeting, so any additional overtime other than that four hours, if it's for a special meeting that a, that an applicant is paying for, then whatever additional overtime would actually be pulled from them. So what it looks like out of my, out of my budget would be approximately four hours of overtime wages, which I did not sit there and calculate at this time. The second option would be to have a member of my department, the County Development Department, sit in the AV room. And it would be my, my recommendation, that the minutes would have to be different. Right now, we got pretty detailed minutes. We can, we, we've got pretty detailed minutes. If I have to pull my Office Manager and, and put them in there to run a camera and a recorder and everything, basically, the minutes would be, what's known as minimal minutes, and it would be topic started, what the topic was, topic started at 8:05, discussion was done at 8:15, here's the vote, and so on and so forth. And then if they wanted to see what the discussion was, they'd just look at the video, videotape of it. Activities normally conducted by the Office Managers or file maintenance and all that could not be performed because that was the day would be in the room there. I can't expect someone to run, although probably be good for exercise, I don't think it would go over very good. And the camera, the, the biggest issue from what I can tell from talking to the, the IT people and Mr. Plowman is that the camera has to be focused on whoever's speaking at the current time. So if I'm over here giving input to the board, the camera needs to be focused over this direction, whereas if Mr. Hoggins is speaking, it needs to be focused on Mr. Hoggins, and if an individual from the board up here is speaking versus, and if someone's sitting here, it needs to be focused. So you really have to stay focused on the task. You can't necessarily be, you know, multitasking. It's good for a job interview when you say you can multitask, but the reality of multitasking, typically, you only get half the stuff done, and I can say that from experience. You only, you might look like you're multitasking, but basically, you're only getting bare minimum done each, each time from what I can tell. And we did discuss this with the Brookings County Planning Commission on Tuesday, June 5th, and basically, they, typical Planning Commission, they really had no, you know, they know we're recorded on tape. Every, every one of our meetings are recorded on tape, so they didn't have a, I don't, we could ask Commissioner Parris, but I don't think it was one way or the other, it was just basically...
They, they were fine. There were no negative comments. Couple jokes about, we have to wear makeup, but other than that, it was fine.
And then my final thoughts on the thing is, it would not affect the way the Planning Commission conducts, conducts its business, one way or the other. We're, we're still gonna be here during our meetings when they're scheduled as regular, but my personal thoughts, and these are my strictly personal thoughts, is, you know, my boards paid to have, have meetings, but there's other county boards paid to have meetings, and if we wanna, wanna have one board be publicized, or any board that's getting paid, I'd recommend that they have to go on TV and, and have a chance to be, be seen by the public. And that's my notes, my comments.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments on that. I had somebody ask me why we don't televise our planning and zoning meetings, and you know from the commission meetings, people watch that stuff. And I said, I thought it was a budget issue, and I talked to Stacy, and we wouldn't have to pay anything except for that person recording. We already have our channel set up, we've got everything, so there's really a minimal budget expense. And I wanted to talk about it now because if we, if you all were willing to give this a try, Bob would need to put it in his budget for next year. And, and I'm thinking after he's looked at it and I talked with Stacy a little bit, and I've talked with Sean too, you know, if he put somewhere between $1,500 and $2,000 in his budget for this, we could be able to televise the planning and zoning meetings, which really is a transparency issue for the county. And, and I would be recommending that that, that would be a good way for us to go down the road in the future. I don't know who would do it. We, we have to look at that, and, and that's not something that we have to figure out today because we can talk about all that when we do our budget stuff, but, but I wanted at least to bring this, let you guys think about it, see if anybody had any heartburn over televising the planning and zoning meetings. And then as relates the last comment for Bob about, about other boards, maybe, but let's start with one, see how it works, and then after that, we can discuss whether or not there should be anything else that we would be televising, but we don't have to decide that at this point, I don't think.
And as to that, most of our other boards that are paid to meet, don't meet in here.
That's a problem.
Yeah. So, you know, therein lies a problem. And, and they don't need to meet in here. I mean, we don't have to have a scheduling issue with here. So that's just my...
Does anybody have a problem with further exploration of being able to get the planning and zoning meetings televised so people out in the county can look at what we're doing and, and I guess have contact with the commissioners if they want on it?
Quite frankly, I, I think it's a good idea because I would like to watch them rather than have to come in sometimes.
I've, I've watched dual counties a few times and I find it interesting watching their, so I think it'd be a good idea.
Process problem I would see is, number one, we're saying we're gonna broadcast it to the entire county. Do we have contracts with both ITC and...
Media com, Swift, tell ITC.
So it does broadcast all over, all the networks. Okay, the second question that I would have, it looks like the only conflict here is who runs the AV equipment? I don't wanna start training a whole bunch of people to do that. I think the combination of option one and option two is instead of A, A being both options, the County Commission Department actually sets an AV room and runs the equipment and we don't have to worry about having another person and, you know, involved with that. So if that happens to be Sean, it happens to be Sean. So to me, we stay consistent with that. Then it also frees your department to make sure they operate somewhat like they did before, which I think is appropriate. So I think just that combination of, of the two options, just keep the County Commission's Department actually running the AV room would be appropriate. That's just my thoughts on that. Like, and again, I think it's a transparency issue, I think it's appropriate to put that out there. I don't think the general public understands the, the commandment, the time, and the effort of the Planning Commission, and, and I think it's appropriate that they see that.
And to answer your first question, because that was one of the questions Planning and Zoning Commission had, on where it gets broadcast, it would be broadcast the same as any of our meetings. It, it's the same...
And your archive is YouTube right now, right? And we would continue to use that. I know the city uses a different archive system through Catholic, never, now, but I don't have a problem with it.
Well, we would, if I may, Madam Chair, we, we would have to request, and, and in my budget, we would go for audio. We have to keep a copy in, in my department, so we would, we would have our own storage also. Besides, wherever it's stored online, we would, we'd keep a copy in our office still in case we fall under a lawsuit, we can give them a copy of our hard drive or whatever we got.
That's who Sean's trying to make a comment here.
The only, the only other thing that may happen, and it only happens every couple times, every two or three years, is if the, if the city or the county has a meeting in this room on the same time I'm supposed to have a meeting, then that literally will push our meetings back weeks at a time. Right now, what, what I do is I go into the, into the room over here and I go ahead and have my meeting, but if we're, if we're televising stuff, then that wouldn't happen. We would have to literally reschedule the meeting.
If that, if that happens, because the bylaws for the Planning Commission would have to be changed if we do this, it could just stay in the bylaws that if for some reason we can't use this room where we have the, the video recording, we will do a tape recording like we do right now.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm just, I'm not arguing against the point. I'm just saying, we, no, we, if, once we start the, going online, we wanna keep doing it, is what I'm saying.
We would.
I'm not trying to talk against it, I'm just saying we just, we may, we'll just...
I just don't think we'd postpone a meeting because of that, because people are doing things and trying to get work done and, and moving along with their projects. Sean, did you wanna say something?
Well, I was just here to answer any questions, if you had any.
We don't currently have any video in, in that room at all, it's just audio.
Uh, that, the room next door, we do have video.
I thought we did.
Yeah, there, there are four cameras in the room. As, I don't know how it works, if there's a meeting going on in here typically, that's recorded, especially most of the city functions. I don't know how recording both at the same time would work.
Fair question.
And, and that's something I, I could visit with the vendor and see if it's something that's possible. I'm not 100% sure on it, but I do know that the audio and video in that room is substantially lower quality...
It is.
...than what we have here.
That might be a joint powers issue to just talk about the two, because occasionally, it does end up being a conflict for things, but... Commissioner Krogman, I didn't hear your opinion, how, where you at on...
Sounds fine.
Okay. All right, so let's put it in the budget and then we'll keep exploring to see if we can make it work. Thank you.
Well, and if we were to record it on video, it is something where we could do scheduled playbacks of it at more convenient, more easier daytime, afternoon, evening, we can literally put it in a schedule and...
Not 2 o'clock in the morning.
Well, if your meeting runs until 2:00 a.m., people can catch up the next day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Bob, I have a question for you though, that, that has nothing to do with this.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell us a little bit, the fire that was north, out north, where the six different fire departments were involved, did our emergency management office have anything to do with that? When, when it's a big deal like that and there are all these different departments called out, is your office involved?
In that particular incident, it was not, we did not get a call to go out to provide assistance. That was a, that was a windy day and, and I wasn't in the office, I wasn't in town at the time, but as far as I am aware, my office never got a call to go out and provide any type of assistance. Typically, what happens in a fire such as that is the, the fire department's got their auxiliary. And, and like, well, let's say Brookings Fire Department goes out, they've got an auxiliary that brings out buckets of water and stuff like that. And then if they start to call in mutual aid, all the other, other people start to bring in water and, and stuff like that. In that instance, from what I can understand, other than the skunk, which the sheriff's office did a good job helping with, you know, it was just, it was just an extremely hot day and, and, and it just, the fire, from what I understand, the firefighters, all the fire departments in the, in the county did a good job and they was rotating people in and out, and, and the structure was so far gone by the time they got there, that all it was, was trying to keep it from spreading into a big grassland fire.
And I guess what my question was more, this was a big deal fire because all those departments are out there and, and there were some issues. But, so emergen, our emergency management, county emergency management's never involved when there's a fire, or this was just an anomaly where we were not involved?
We're typically not involved in just a structure fire. The times we do get involved is when there are the ethanol plant and the, the Valero plants and the soybean plants, anything that's got the hazardous materials, or if someone physically gets hurt, then they call me out. Yeah, well, I don't typically respond to traffic accidents or fires unless I'm, unless I'm specifically called out. I do get specifically called out for gas leaks and things like that.
And, and the trailer was what I was wondering about, when there are six different departments out there and, and they don't need any assistance that would come out of the trailer, kind of...
No. What they wanna do is they wanna get into the fire truck that's got the air condition. I mean, well, it's, it's not a laughing matter, it, it was, it was over, it was in the high 90s at the time, and they literally, when the fire trucks go out, they leave them on, they leave them run with the air conditions on, and that's, when they said they rotate out, that's what they do, they take them out of the heat, put them inside a cooled vehicle, and then they, then another team goes out.
And it was so hot that Pete Bowser at our P.E., I forget my...
LEPC meeting.
LEPC meeting said that it was so hot that the firemen could only work less than 20 minutes, and then they would have to take a break because of the combined heat from the fire with the heat from the temperature that day.
And, and the bunker gear that they're required to wear.
Okay.
But we're, and my office is always available to help when, when they need the assistance.
Okay. And I just wondered how that worked when the county helped and when the county didn't, so...
And the Red Cross usually will show up too with water and stuff.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
I interject one thing, is that I did, at that particular fire, the fire chief in Brookings was the incident commander, and so he, he ran, ran the show, which was good. I did call him and, because there was, they have the, the fireman's auxiliary that brings water out, and he orders food and things, and I, and I just connected with him and I said, I volunteered Bob's budget. I said, if they were short of water, I would think that Bob would have something in his emergency, I haven't even talked to him about it, so I'm kinda getting them across the head here, but I said, if they were short for water, I would think the county could come up with some money to help them with water. Aurora has chaplains now, they have a husband and wife that are ordained ministers, and they're available to come to all the fires and if there's any victims to talk about that type of stuff. And they brought water too, you know, but they go out and fundraise all the time to get water and stuff, and I'm thinking, you know, major fire in Brookings, I, I can't believe that we can't come up with, so I told them if they were short water, to get ahold of me and I'd figure out how to get them some water and stuff, so...
And this fire was just more than a regular structure fire. With all those departments there, it was, it was a big deal.
But I think it should be noted that Mr. Hartman, as incident commander, is top of the line. I mean, you're not gonna find a better incident, incident commander anywhere. So he knows, he knows what the assets are. He knows who to call should he need something. So, you know, we gotta let him do it.
And he does an outstanding job, so...
And, and will support all fire departments in the county as we always had, and I have no problem if they request water, taking water out to them at any time.
Yes, we're going to take a 10-minute break and then we'll start with regular business. Thank you. Point of privilege. Point of privilege.
Let's go. Boat's sitting waiting. Sitting there like, oh my God.
I'm calling the meeting back to order. Mr. Commissioner Jensen has another obligation. All right. We're back in session, and we're moving to regular business. Item number A, action to approve Agreement 18-61, an agreement between Pictometry International Corporation in Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Sean, did you want to talk about this?
Yes. This is our ongoing agreement, well, not an ongoing, this is a new agreement. Our initial agreement was with them in 2012 for a flyover in 2013 and 16. This is for a scheduled flyover in 2019 and 2022. The one thing that is different with this one is they are asking for money upfront, which is the first time they've done that. I looked back at the agreement we signed in 2012. It was just, when the material, when the product was delivered, we pay our first installment, then over the next two years, pay the next two. This time, they are asking for $9,647.25 before we are cemented into their schedule as part of the agreement. The overall cost annually is $38,589. Does get divided up between E-911, the city, BMU, and the county. So, for the most part, we pay a quarter of it, plus whatever funding we provide to E-911.
Stacy, did you want to add anything?
And I have the signed agreements back from both the city and BMU. Haven't gotten the signed agreement back from the E-911 board yet, but having, being a part of that group, I know that this is in their budget moving forward. So I think it's just a, you know, just a formality in getting that signed document back. So I know that they are on board as well, so we can, I think, move forward confidently, knowing that we have the three partners.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I just wanted to make you aware that that $9,000 wasn't something anticipated for this year, the $9,600. So it would be something that we would probably need to supplement.
Okay. Thank you. Item B, action to approve Agreement 18-62, a state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Rehabilitation Replacement of Structure Number
Move approval.
Second.
Dick, anything you want to add?
No, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's just the DOT wanting to cross her Ts and dot their Is.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, action to approve Agreement 18-63, a state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Rehabilitation Replacement of Structure Number 06-147-200. Move approval.
Second.
Anything further on this one, Dick?
This is, this is the one on the Sinai Road, that bridge that we got the grant for. So now we'll have one for 238, 239, and 200. That completes those three.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, action to approve Agreement 18-64, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, action to approve Agreement 18-65, an application voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Curtis Nelson.
Move approval.
Second.
Dick, did you want to say anything about this one?
Yeah, this is, this is what I was touching on in my department head report. Originally, the one we signed for 239 included roughly about, you know, four tenths of an acre. And these are, these are all temporary easements for the construction. Now that we've got both of them into one, Curtis, we had to fill out another one, or the state did, and then have Curtis sign it for .8 acres. So roughly the same thing, just clearly defining what their intent is. Now, this one's a donation, so...
It's temporary.
This is, yeah, it's just temporary.
Well, instructions going on.
But I still have to go through and explain to them that he has a right to have an appraisal and whatever, but generally, they just donating it for, most of the time, they don't even use them.
Any other questions? Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, action to approve Agreement 18-66, an election agreement for Brookings County.
Move approval.
Second.
Vicki, would you? Okay, Kristen, thank you.
So this agreement is kind of based off of our old one. This is an updated one based on the new technology and everything that we use. It's kind of, it's the same one that we brought forth previously this year, and then we just did a few corrections and changes with the help of LeAnn and also the state's attorney's office. So, we did get this back now from the city and the school, and they seemed happy with it, so.
And you're happy with it?
I'm happy with it also, yeah.
Any questions from anybody?
Just one quick question. And other elections in which Brookings County is not a participant under equipment, about the last sentence, it says the entity is also responsible for transport and setup, tear-down of the equipment. They're responsible for replacing equipment, but the entity is responsible for transport and setup and tear-down of the equipment. Does that mean, as you had mentioned earlier, that you have, some people take some things, but the workers are responsible for transporting equipment and setup and tear-down? The temporary workers, election poll workers?
The election workers, so I guess I'm not sure. We would get the equipment to the city and school for them to take possession of, and I'm not sure whether they have their election workers deliver it, or whether they deliver it themselves. Once they get it from us, it's kind of, kind of on them.
Yeah. I just noticed this particular time, I used to always help my wife transport equipment, and I always had a vehicle where we could put equipment into it.
Yep.
This time, I wasn't able to help her, but the equipment showed up on Friday and stayed in the vehicle until Tuesday, which was a long time. So I needed to use a vehicle, and so it had to be taken out of the vehicle and stacked in my garage, which isn't probably the best place for putting that stuff.
So that was for our election.
Yeah, it was for our election. But so what I'm saying is, are we also responsible for transporting stuff? Maybe we should figure out a way for poll workers to get their stuff there, other than if they don't have a vehicle, they don't have a car, aren't able to lift the materials.
We could make arrangements. I mean, if somebody needed help to get something there that, you know, if they didn't have a car, or was in the shop or something, I mean, we would definitely do what we can to help.
Okay. I just, that's the question there, it also relates to us in addition to the others. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item G, action to approve a right-of-way certificate for project number BRF 63190017-74, PCN 06HT.
Move approval. Second.
Dick, anything you want to say about this?
No, just a standard form for our project.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item H, action to approve a utility certificate for project number BRF 63190017-4, PCN 06HT.
Move approval.
Second.
Anything for you, Dick?
No. Anything, anything that the state administers, any project, they always have these. We got to make sure that we've made contacts and obtained the right-of-way.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item I, action to approve a request to hold a fireworks display at Meadow Creek Golf Course near Volga on Friday, June 8th at dusk.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there anybody that wants to talk about this issue?
Fireworks displays that are out in the county require commission approval. Meadow Creek Golf Course, although seems like it's maybe a part of the city of Volga, it is not. It's actually out in the county, and these fireworks are actually shot off from the east, southeast corner of their driving range area. So it's out, still considered out on the county, very edge of town, but it's still considered out in the county, and so they would need commission approval to do this. And this is tomorrow, so we are running really close on time, so.
Any further discussion?
They do notify the fire departments in the areas.
The fire department is always usually at this event, and they have fire trucks right there, and Luz Fireworks is the company that actually sets them off, and they utilize the fire department at this event each year, so they're aware of it.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item J, canvas of election results from June 5th, 2018 primary election.
All right. So I've always been curious on what the proper way to do a canvas is, and every time I ask somebody, everybody does it different. So I'm just going to kind of wing it, and if you guys have questions, just let me know. And Stacy might even be able to chime in on how she used to do this stuff, too. I'm not real sure. But, so, basically, I just want to start off by saying, Brookings County had a great election. It was very successful, and I'm very happy with how everything turned out. You might have heard in the news, there was some slight little hiccups across the state with e-poll books and stuff, and Brookings County was very minimally affected by that. We had a slight hiccup at about 8:30, and it didn't affect all of the computers, so it didn't affect any voters. They were able to quickly sign back into the... Um, they were able to quickly sign back into the laptop and keep on rolling, so we were very happy with that. One issue that we did have, which was completely out of our control, was the air conditioning in Volga did not work. Those poor ladies over there working our Volga location were sweating the entire day. So that was probably our biggest issue that we had, and even though it wasn't really a minor issue, it wasn't our issue, so, um, other than that, I was really happy with, with the way everything turned out. Our workers, um, they had, this was a very slow election for us. Um, our turnout was about eighteen point nine seven. Across the statewide, it was, um, roughly twenty-six percent, so it was pretty low here, I would say this is probably one of our worst that I know of. So with it being so slow, our, the software has a security feature built into it to where it will timeout after, um, non-use, basically, and that's a security feature, it's designed to do that, we want it to do that, but that was happening throughout, where normally we're busier and we can keep these things rolling, and we shouldn't probably have that issue a whole lot, but with this election, we did. It wasn't an actual issue with laptop, they're supposed to do that. So they would, it would timeout, and they'd have to sign back in, but again, supposed to do that. So with that, um, our results, um, I guess I'll kind of start with, um, just showing you kind of the, um, we've got, each vote center does a sheet that shows how many ballots they had, and then we have a scanner sheet that says how many we actually ran through. Ideally, we want those numbers to be the same. So, um, with our absentees, we started out with five hundred and sixty-six absentees. Absentee voting ends the day before Election Day, um, and when we do that printout, at that time, it had five hundred and sixty-six on there. Two things can happen, you can receive ballots still in the mail, or they can drop them off on Election Day, so you can still get your absentees back. The other thing that can happen is, is until three o'clock on Election Day, someone can come in and do an authorized messenger ballot, so somebody who might be hospitalized or just can't come in, um, they can still get a ballot until three o'clock. We had one of each of those instances happen, so, um, at five o'clock on Monday, when I printed that, that list, and it says five hundred and sixty-six ballots, we actually have two more. So on Election Night, we have our resolution board then, um, verify that that is in fact the case, they add them to the list, and, um, it worked out perfect. So we, um, ended up with five hundred and sixty-eight absentees, and that is exactly what we counted, so, um, we were spot on with that. And I'll just kind of go through the vote centers, um, kind of in order, um, I don't know if, I don't know if anybody wants to zoom in or not, but I'll just kind of spread my stuff out here. Um, so with vote center, um, one, which is our activity center that we use, um, I did notice that, and it doesn't come through real well, their math, um, I kind of penciled on the side, it looks like they, they didn't do their math correctly, so, um, the ballots to be counted actually is, it's five-eleven, when you do the math down, it should have been five-eleven, and, um, and that is actually what we ended up with, was five-eleven, so... So we're good on that one. Thanks. Okay, and two, so Bethel Baptist is notoriously our busiest location, um, so we had, they had, they show on here that they should have had eight hundred and ninety-four, and we do actually have that, this particular vote center, um, and I'm gonna just kind of refer to Jenna, just kick in here if, if I explain this wrong. So you'll see on here, it actually says seventeen hundred and fifty-nine. When we were originally running this through the first time, when you're doing the scanner, you run a batch through, you save them, you run a batch through, you save them, you just keep going so you don't lose any of that data. Well, I think, I think our problem was a humidity issue, and we ended up jamming the scanner, and so when you read through the scanner, it, we weren't a hundred percent sure whether we needed to recount the ones that were outsourced in the, in the bin, so rather than just completely start over, we thought, well, let's get to the end and make sure, you know, see where we're at with our numbers, but we were quite a bit off, we were twenty-nine off, I believe, and we knew that that, that wasn't right, that was about what was in our outsourced bin, so it really didn't count those, and we thought it should have, but we'd already stuffed them in with our ballot. So what we did is, we ran a print-off, oops, which is actually this one, and then it gives me, it gives you here all of the totals from that original scan, and then we ran them back through, but all of those numbers are saved in there, so we got our, our grand total, and then we subtracted all of those to get our accurate number. So then all in all, it did end up coming out exactly right. So since then, we have now learned how to clear out that particular vote center, at the time, we didn't, we just did it on the fly, we figured it out, we knew how to do it, and we came out, so it worked out good. Um, with vote center three is Swiftell Center, um, they are, they said they should have sixty-eight ballots, and we turned out with sixty-eight. So we were good there. That, that location, the, the, the whole primary was pretty slow, but that location, I think, kind of had a, um, had a setback, I think, because there were some roads blocked off over there, and I don't think that people realized that it was a vote center this time. So that, I think that kind of played into them being so low. Um, with number four is Aurora, and they had said that they should have a hundred and forty, and they did have a hundred and forty. Number five is Elkton, and they said a hundred and twenty-two, and then they did have a hundred and twenty-two. Number six, that is White, um, again, I think we had a math issue here, um, so when I redid the math off on the side here, actually, their number should have been one sixty-eight, and they did have one sixty-eight. So really, they weren't off, even though they thought they were, they just, just miscalculated. Um, number seven is Bruce. Um, Bruce said they should have a hundred and twenty-three, and they did have a hundred and twenty-three. Number eight is Trinity Lutheran over in Arlington, and they said they should have had fifty-five, and they did show up with fifty-five. Number nine then is Sinai, um, they said they should have eighty-six, they actually had eighty-seven, but if you do notice, there was one blank ballot. So I think what happened there is I think one stuck to another one, and then the counter actually counted it through when it went through, but it was blank, so I think that was their issue there, I don't, I don't think there's, there's a problem, I just think that's what happened. Okay, and then Volga, um, theirs shows that they should have the three forty-nine, they actually had three forty-eight, but what we did learn is, is that the software did exactly what it's supposed to do, and there's a report here, they had one voter collision, and you'll see the times. I think what happened there, so it's the same voter, and it shows the time, so it's like, I'm not a hundred percent sure what happened, but it's almost like they double-clicked, and it tried to send them through twice, so it was fighting each other, so it does add to the number, but it gives us this report so that we can see what happened. So we, we can verify, uh, you know, from what we see here, that actually, they should have then had the three forty-eight, so then they would match. It does not give voter credit twice, it's just simply in the software to just show us that, hey, this, this little hiccup happened, so... And then number, uh, vote center number eleven, which is over at Holy Life, um, here in town, so they said they should have three hundred and two ballots, and we did in fact count three hundred and two. So, yeah, all in all, I think everything went really well, I was happy with everything. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions?
No, I would just like to personally thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, you're welcome, yeah.
Great.
Do you need, is there a...
Thing to sign?
Anything to sign?
Jen has got it. Yeah, and I want to just commend all of them, they, they did an awesome job, and one thing I forgot to mention in my report too, there was one problem with a computer, it wasn't an issue with voting, but just a problem that we, Sean went up to White, and Sean is just always good to help at a minute's notice, so we appreciate that too, that he was able to go up there and just have his expertise and get that going, and no problem, so, thanks.
Thank you.
We should probably have a motion to approve the canvas.
Okay, so we do need a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? And I think we'll do a roll call vote on this.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commission Department Director Report.
Uh, the first thing is, I'd had a conversation with, um, Commissioner Krogman about possibly changing the July third meeting date, and we were going to discuss that, um, now, if there's interest in changing that date, um, and if so, when would you like to conduct that, uh, either late June, early July meeting?
I, I just will be out of town, um, that day on vacation, and, and I just didn't know, since we had two weeks in between to the, so we don't have our next meeting till the twenty-fourth, would it be possible to move it to tenth? Still have a week in between, but that's just, again, I'll just throw it out there, if it works, it works, if it doesn't, doesn't, uh, I won't be able to do it remotely or anything like that, and if I have to be gone, I mean, that's fine too, so...
I won't be here on the tenth.
Okay.
I just, I think, wow, we'll certainly miss you.
It's just from the heart.
I just think that we don't dare start changing dates for vacations, because we're gonna run into other stuff, because we set our dates the beginning of the year, and then the rest of us plan around it if we can, and if we can't, we don't. So, you know, I, I think it's better to leave it where it is. We're, we're, we're gonna, it, July's a tough month, we're gonna run into somebody gone, uh, pretty often, I think, so we'll miss you, but we'll fill you in.
Is there anyone else that cannot be here on the third, where we can have a quorum issue?
I'll be here.
And I'll be here, so we should be fine?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Okay, uh, the general fund surplus analysis for the end of April was included with my staff report, and we were at approximately forty-two percent, slightly higher than average, so we're, uh, we're in good shape there. Um, there was an article that Commissioner Pierce had provided for, uh, to me from the Brookings County Historical Society's newsletter about our walking plow, that's down, uh, downstairs, underneath the stairwell. Just a reminder, once again, I did set out the, uh, budget hearing schedule for next Tuesday and Wednesday, so next Tuesday, the twelfth, we're starting at eight-thirty, uh, that one is going to be kind of, will take up most of the day on the twelfth, and then Wednesday, again, starting at eight-thirty, but we hope to be wrapped up by, uh, by noon, for sure, but that schedule I handed out this morning to all of you, um, along with some of the other dates, uh, we have the retirement reception for, um, Brookings City Manager Jeff Weldon, that's Thursday, the twenty-first, from five until eight. Some other things that have come up, there is on Monday, June eleventh, so it says coming Monday, between eight-thirty and ten, uh, Monday morning, there is a United Way meeting at their office at six nineteen Fifth Avenue, if anyone is interested in, in attending that. Uh, June fourteenth at five o'clock is the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, where, uh, the jail expansion project will be heard before that group again, and that's, uh, Thursday, June fourteenth at five o'clock, and they meet, uh, next door here in the community room. On the twenty-sixth of June, uh, that's a Tuesday, and is that commission, I don't think that's commission, no, um, First District is having their STIP review meeting at their offices in Watertown, that starts at ten o'clock on Tuesday, June twenty-sixth, if anyone's interested in going to that. And then we did get the, um, First District Newsletter this past week, I think it, I got that via email this weekend, just to get it on your calendar, they have the annual picnic every year up in Watertown at, uh, at the county park up there, Memorial Park in Watertown, and that's gonna be on Wednesday, July eighteenth, so it's a little ways out yet, but, uh, I wanted, and you guys to get that on your calendar now, so you're aware of that, so Wednesday, July eighteenth, at Memorial Park up in, um, on, on the west side of Lake Compeska, and that will start, the meal will start at about six o'clock on that, that day. Um, kind of going back to budgets, in front of you this morning were the department requested budget books for you to leisurely peruse over the weekend before Tuesday. Um, the non-mandated information is in Dropbox, we're not going to hand out the big, thick book, we do have a couple of them made, but we put all of that information into Dropbox this year, so we're not, it saved a lot of time in not creating those very large, um, non-mandated books for everybody, so we do have a couple of them, though, hard copies.
I have a request, though, would you please hard copy the cover sheet?
The spreadsheet, yes, you will be getting a hard copy of that spreadsheet as part of that analysis information, we're still working on putting that together, as well as the revenue book, and I'm hoping that since we don't have the hard copies, we'll get all of that into Dropbox before the weekend, so, um, at least that it'll be there, and then we'll get the hard copies of revenue and the analysis, which will include the non-mandated information in it, so, um, that will, you'll definitely have that for, uh, Tuesday. And then, lastly, for me, uh, just kind of an update on some of the happenings out at the BCOAC, um, middle of May, we haven't met for a while, Dolan Elementary School brought about forty students, and Dolan, if you know where that is, near Redfield, that's, that's a heck of a trip for those kids, a field trip, they brought about forty students and did archery and geocaching, and our part-time membership assistants stepped up, um, I know Tom Creer was part of that event, too, they had a great time, this, the students had a great time, and I think the teachers had a great time, too, uh, so there was some discussion about coming back, so, um, that was a good event. On, um, the Sunday before Memorial Day, we offered a free day, a day pass for the gun range for veterans and military, I don't think we had a great turnout for that, the, the weather was hot enough, you would have thought maybe people wanted to come inside, but we did offer that, and, you know, we're just trying to, uh, start some programs out there, you know, the new director can decide if that's something they want to continue, but, um, just trying to get some advertising and get our name out there. Tomorrow, the Elkton Park and Rec is, are bringing some students over to do archery and geocaching again tomorrow afternoon, so there'll be a few students out there doing that.
What is geocaching?
You know, I, I've never geocached, but what it is, they're utilizing the nature park next door for the geocache, and the kids actually use, uh, compasses or GPS units, and they're given coordinates, and they, they go out and try to find like a little cache, uh, that, and, and the membership assistants put, it's a little box, and there's little trinkets or goodies, and the geocaching etiquette says if you take something out, you've put something in, and so, um, there's places that do this all over, but they set this up specifically for these events, and they, they go out into the nature park to do that, so part of it is utilizing the archery range, and then part of it is going next door, door to the nature park to do that. Uh, this weekend, too, they're having a, uh, big, um, kind of a fundraiser memorial for, uh, Caleb Hockett out at the OAC, or at the BCOAC, so they're doing, I think they're having tables and some raffles, and I think they're grilling out on the south side, so there'll be, I think it's a bike-a-thon, too, so they're doing, and that's our kickoff, the, the BCOAC is the kickoff for that, so that's this weekend. Father's Day, we're gonna be running a, a special for fathers, um, and the part-time membership assistants have put together a, uh, an archery event, and it's going to be a little friendly competition where the... And it's going to be a little friendly competition where the winning team can win the golden arrow. So, they're going to create some trophy. And so, you have to be registered by the 15th. And you'll probably hear some ads on the radio again. And they're promoting this Father's Day archery event. And they've actually taken their archery books where they've done some training, the membership assistants have, and have come up with games to do. And I think they're even gotten, are going to be utilizing maybe shooting some balloons and stuff now. So, I think that'll be a good event. I hope we have some turnout for that. On the 12th, June 12th, that's next Tuesday, I, on the calendar, both the Pistol Range Committee and the Archery Range Committee meet that evening. Pistol Range is at 5:30 and Archery Range is at 7:30. I'm going to try to get to both of those meetings next Tuesday. I am meeting Tanaya Bethke with GF&amp;P. She's the program coordinator out of Sioux Falls. She's going to come up and introduce herself to me. We've had, we've chatted via email and via phone. But June 13th, she and I are going to meet out there that afternoon and look around and visit. And then we also have an intern starting. Her name is Pedro Farrell. And she's with Game Fish and Parks, but she's working with the city, GF&amp;P and us. Although there's really no, we're not, we're not paying for her, but she's, half her time is going to be spent with us and half with the city doing some programming things too, between the nature park and the BCOAC. So, I hope to, I know she's getting ready to get, willing to start now. And I hope to get in touch with her and meet up with her too. And introduce myself and see what kind of ideas she has too. So, it has been busy out there. We're continuing to try to keep some programs moving forward in this interim time. So, but I think overall, things are going pretty well. So, I haven't had a chance to get out there too much. I've been pretty busy with budgets and stuff. But I hope to, in the next week or so, to get out there a little more again. That's my report, unless you have any other questions for me.
That's all pretty exciting out of BCOAC. Mr. Breitzman, anything from the State's Attorney's Office?
Is there a BCOAC newsletter that's published that I may be missing, or you thought about that?
Not a newsletter. No, there's a Facebook page.
Okay.
I get regular emails about events.
I'm just thinking about the public's, you know, interest in all of those activities. And some of my organizations have a newsletter, but you always have to have somebody that has the time to put it together.
Thank you. Commission reports. Commissioner Jensen?
On the week of the 20th there, I did stop out to BCOAC, just checking in with the interns. Sonia's 4-H group had a babysitting class out there. It was, I guess, pretty well attended. There was like 40-some students. They were utilizing the whole facility. They had groups in each room. And it looked like there was quite a few people there. On the 29th, had a advisory board meeting out at the OAC, kind of reviewing the budget and going through the ins and outs of that. There's talk of, some talk about the parking lot on the north side and also the driveway on the south side of the building. And then on the 4th, we, along with Commissioner Krogman and Stacy, we did interviews for the director out there. And also on the 5th, we had interviews in the morning. And in the afternoon, Commissioner Krogman and myself attended the intergovernmental meeting. Interesting with SDSU and the city of all that, with road projects, building projects and everything that's going on. It's a lot of, lot of construction and new construction. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Jensen? Mr. Miller?
On May 23rd, I was the one and only to attend the 10-county meeting in Clark. There was discussion, the speaker that we had in addition to the legislators was Joe Fiala with the Governor's Office of Economic Development. And he was quite informative and quite enthusiastic. And I would recommend that if anybody wanted to know anything about that office and the kind of things that they do, that you go ahead and contact him because he's a very energetic fellow with a lot of good ideas. The other thing that was discussed was some, well, he discussed value-added ag and technology manufacturing and bio-science and financial services. But then the other thing that was discussed that came from the state office was wind tower decommissioning is apparently, it's a hot button topic right at the moment. And wind tower revenues. And some think that only the school districts in the counties where the wind towers are should receive, rather than that being split up among all of them. It's, that's another hot button, I should think. I don't think the school districts are going to like that very much. But anyway, that is being discussed. That's, there's a new state law that starts July 1. But we do this anyway. And it's, you have to do your call to order and then your invitation to anyone who wants to speak. And we do that anyway. So, that isn't anything that we need to worry about. On May 24th, I attended a special finance meeting at the domestic abuse shelter. We're changing bookkeeping assistance. So, that's what that was all about. And then I also attended the mayor's appreciation reception, which was well-attended and very nice. And that's all I have.
Stephanie, who was talking about the decommissioning on the wind towers? Okay. In our ordinance review, we're getting soon to wind towers and decommissioning. We have nothing in our ordinance that has any teeth to it, in my opinion, as relates to decommissioning. And are there any recommendations that are coming out from that group, or?
No, I think this is just, you know, different commissioners submit things to the office so that they bring them forward. However, you know, that's not to say that it maybe wouldn't be prudent of us to call Bob or Chris and me if they, you know, want to talk about it.
Is that, Bob, something that somebody from your office could do before we have our ordinance meeting on the wind tower stuff? See if they're getting any materials? Because we're currently gathering together sample ordinances. Although, when you talk to the state, they say they did theirs off the Brookings County ordinance, but they had...
That was brought up.
Exactly. But we need to look at decommissioning a little bit more. And we're looking for some language on that and some thoughts, so.
Wasn't the PUC have some decommissioning in their approval of the wind towers?
Yes.
There's already something set in statute with the PUC.
Not...
Yeah, they do have decommissioning.
Okay. And we should look at the statute on that. I think, again, the statute doesn't, isn't maybe, it's still a developing issue of the law. There were some, there was some conversation out in Piree this last year. And I don't think that there were, that the legislation proposed passed. I don't think, if that's my recollection, but I could be wrong on that. So, but we'll look at that too. Anybody else have any questions for Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Krogman?
Okay, May 16th, had a beta meeting. 17th, we had growth partnership meeting. They went through the audit. Everything looks good there. Met with Stacy on the 24th to discuss a few things. Had the BCOAC Advisory Board meeting with Commissioner Jensen on the 29th. The 31st, in the morning, had another growth partnership meeting to take care of a couple of things that we needed to wait for. So, we had a quorum there to get that done. And then had the Brookings Health meeting that night on the 31st. And then on the 4th, and the 5th, did interviews here in the, there for the BCOAC director position. And then, like Commissioner Jensen said, had intergovernmental meeting on the 5th that evening there too. So, been a busy couple of weeks.
Any questions for Commissioner Krogman? Commissioner Bartley?
All right. ICAP met on the 16th of August in a general meeting. No changes to ICAP's programs at that particular meeting. On the 17th, met with the E911 Board as we worked through our budget requests for the next year. Then on the 21st, Essential Behavioral Health, had a board meeting. And a lot of things are changing there. And it's good progress. Let's see here. Joint Jurisdiction was the 23rd. And I'm sure Leanne will have a good report on that, so I'll skip it here. I don't want to take your thunder. Mental Health Task Force met June 14th, or not 14th, whatever day it was here, yesterday, Monday. Monday, we met. And they're progressing on their studies or their questionnaires they want to put out for both the city and the county. So, well, it's kind of a slow process to put this questionnaire together, but hopefully it'll be ready to go out in August. I think we decided we'd try and get that out. So, that would complete my report.
Any questions for Commissioner Bartley? On May 16th, I attended the BEDC meeting. On the, on May 16th and on June 6th, Terry and Bob and Richard and Luke and I met to talk about ordinances. And I don't normally come back and talk to you about things that we're looking at revisions on. But what we're working on now is adding a section to our ordinance regarding adult entertainment in the county. The sample ordinance provided by First District contains a provision that says if an adult entertainment facility of some type is licensed by Brookings County, and if there is a violation of the terms of the ordinance, that there can be a revocation of that license. And the hearing would be held by the Brookings County Commission. I don't want to speak for all of you, I did, but I want to be sure I'm saying it right, whether we are the appropriate entity to conduct a hearing on whether or not an activity at an adult entertainment facility is obscene under our ordinance. Is that something that we, as a commission, are, do we want to be the entity that's hearing those types of disputes? It's not a zoning issue.
I guess I, I would need to have a definition of what adult entertainment is to begin with. I mean, I have an idea what it is, but... And it is, you're thinking we are not the proper...
I think, but Luke is going back to First District, looking at where that language came from. I think it might be modeled on what's going on in Connington County, but I'm not sure. I think, and Terry thought, that there might be some due process issues with how that ordinance was written. I don't know how you take somebody's license ex parte, that means without a hearing. You know, I don't know how you do that. And that's a liability issue. I just have some concerns about that. Myself, and we'll look at some additional ordinances, I just think that should be heard by a court. I don't know why we would want to be sitting here making a decision on whether or not a particular activity is obscene under our ordinance. But...
I'm going to guess that if we made a decision, either way, it's going to end up in court.
Exactly.
So, your suggestion, go to court first.
Any other thoughts from anybody on that?
I guess explain to me the process that it would go through, where it would end up in front of us.
Okay. So, somebody would apply, let's say you wanted to have an adult bookstore.
Okay, so we're talking out in the county?
Out in the county.
Right. Anything in the city is handled by the city.
So, out in the county, somebody wants to have an adult bookstore, okay? And there are rules that'll be in the ordinance regarding, and we've talked a lot about those, can't sell alcohol. Or if you're doing adult entertainment where there might be dancing, no alcohol. And the proposed ordinance is no touching, no gratuities, okay?
Why would you do it then?
Well, we're thinking that might be an issue. But so, there'll be these kinds of rules in the ordinance. And then the commission, the county commission, issues a license, just like we issue a liquor license. And say, yep, you can have an adult bookstore. You can have this adult entertainment facility, you know, whatever, okay? But you have to comply with the rules of the ordinance. So, the way the sample ordinance that we got reads is that if somebody violated any one of those things, maybe somebody at that adult bookstore was consuming an alcoholic beverage, okay? Then, without a hearing, this ordinance would allow the commission to revoke that license. I have concerns about doing it that way. I don't think we can do it that way. And then that person can ask for a hearing. And that hearing is held in front of the commission. And the commission makes a decision whether or not their license should be revoked. Now, we don't make, we're going back and we're looking at the alcohol. And Steve, you might have more input on this. I don't think we revoke people's alcohol license. That's done by the state. Am I correct on that?
I think if you issue it, you would have the authority to make a recommendation. And probably an obligation to make a recommendation on it. And then ultimately, I think the state acts on that recommendation. But I think you, the county would have involvement on it.
But it's a recommendation and not the actual action itself?
I think so.
So, what, where we left it is, Luke's going to go back, do some more work on it. And then come back with some recommendations as how we set up that administrative process for how that license gets revoked if there's a problem with the ordinance. I just, we don't do those types of hearings on anything else. I don't know that that's something that, if we're not required to do it, that we want to be doing it. But I wanted to get a consensus from you that we should look at other options first.
Well, under your scenarios, they consumed alcohol while in a adult bookstore. There has to be a prosecution first, a charge, a prosecution and a finding in court before we would take action, Zach or Axel.
Well, not the way...
It doesn't come to necessarily to us first until it's adjudicated.
Not the way that ordinance is currently written. We would take their license, okay? Without a hearing, yes. We would take their license without a hearing. And then the State's Attorney's Office would prosecute. That'd be parallel actions going on. But our process happens in seven days. And very few court things happen in seven days.
Well, I think that we would, I would go through it, the court before it came to us.
Yeah.
You'd have to have some definitive action on whether it was, you know, guilty of violating the ordinance or not. And once it's proven in a court of law, it'd be easier for us to take action. I'd be more comfortable going to court first.
So, we, we'll keep exploring that. But I wanted you to know that that's what we're currently working on.
I don't think it'll happen without alcohol anyway.
Okay. So, then on May 17th, we had an E911 meeting. And Stacy and Bob maybe can pitch in on this, but it was our budget meeting for the year. And when Police Chief Erickson reported back and we talked about what's going on with dispatch. In the past, it's always been the goal that we always have two dispatchers on duty at any one time.
That's a requirement, isn't it?
I think it's more a goal. And you were at that meeting too, right? That's okay. Anybody can participate, because I want to be sure we got this right. So, we are not meeting that under our current staffing. And so, the E911 Board is going to be recommending that we have another, we hire another FTE for a dispatcher, another position. And what we'll do is take our recommendation that some of the overtime dollars currently being spent and some of the part-time money be eliminated and that go into that position. So, it won't be all the funds that we have to come up with new. But we are going to recommend another dispatch position when we... recommend another dispatch position when we get to budget. We didn't get our budget worked out at that meeting, because some, there were some questions about how some of the numbers had been arrived at. I think there might have been a math there. And then the chief sent out the proposed budget, and I don't know if all of you have looked at that, but the numbers didn't work out right. And I talked to Chief Erickson and Chris, and they were going to go back and look at that, and you were on vacation then, Stacy. I sent you an email, but we need to just talk a little bit about that. Then the numbers on how they did the math on some of the employee expenses weren't right, and so we're in the progress on that, but I didn't want you to be surprised that we are looking at another position so that we can get to that, too, on the, to people in dispatch at all times. Anybody else want to say anything about E911 based on that? On May 23rd, attended the Joint Jurisdiction Committee meeting, and we just, I didn't really have anything specific to report back. We're just kind of working through the process yet again. Went to the mayor's reception for volunteers on May 24th, attended the LPC meeting on May 31st. And that meeting, we were going to have out at the BCOAC, and we ended up at Days Inn, which was fine, it was great. But apparently there was a calendar mix-up, and I just want to be sure that, because the calendar was the big thing out at the BCOAC, do we have that under control?
Yes. Me being new to it, I wasn't quite looking, it's not very user-friendly, the way they have it set up, and I think we're going to look at, I think that's something that needs to be discussed on how we can better schedule the rooms out there. Right now, everybody's schedules, events, everything is kind of on one, and it's kind of nice to see a snapshot of it, but this kind of, in the process of everybody's schedules and whatnot getting placed on the calendar, it'd end up kind of being pushed up to the top, and it was just like, I'd have to click on it to even look that there, and I was just looking at the times, and there was nothing there, and so I said, yeah, it's not in use. So we're going to be looking at that. It was just, it was, you know, it's me kind of being, yeah, it's me kind of being new to the calendar and whatnot, but...
Just be sure you have Sonia in on that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yep.
And that's what the conflict was, is that there, 4-H had something that...
Yeah, they already had the classroom reserved, so...
Okay. Then we had the planning and zoning meeting on Tuesday night, and that would be my report. Any questions? Then, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session in accordance with SDCL 1-25-2, subpart 1, personnel.
Second?
Okay, we're in executive session.